Good evening, welcome to the Northampton City Council Meeting of September 7th, 2017. I'm City Councilman Bill Dwight and I will be presiding tonight. And we will start with our customary public comment section where we invite the public to speak on any topic. It doesn't have to be related to the agenda in any way. We ask that you respect the decorum of the chamber and that we also ask that you, when you step up, please state your name and address for the public record. Also understand that this is your moment to speak and the council is running from speaking, principally to conform with Massachusetts general law because we can't discuss items that are not posted on the agenda. So with that said, Amy Bookbinder.
Amy Bookbinder, Robert Avenue in Leeds, and I'm going to make the shortest comment I've ever made. I'm here to strongly support the Medicare for All Resolution, and I want to thank everyone for bringing it forward. So I hope we get final approval tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else interested in speaking tonight? Okay. I'm going to ask the interim administrative assistant, that's a very big type, to call the roll.
Counselor Bidwell.
Here.
Counselor Carney.
Present.
Counselor Dwight.
Here.
Counselor Klein.
Here.
Counselor LaBarge.
Present.
Counselor Murphy.
Here.
Counselor Nash.
Here.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Here.
Counselor Shara.
Here.
All right, we have a quorum. So we start with an announced public hearing. This is item 17.343. This is a public hearing regarding national grid pole petition for Elm Street at St. John's Church, and this is continued from August 17th. This is in accordance with the provisions of Section 22, Chapter 156 of the general laws requiring that a public hearing will be held on the petition of a national grid to erect poles, wires upon, along, under, or across one or more public ways. I accept a motion to open the public hearing. Motion's made, seconded. Counselor LaBarge and then Counselor O'Donnell. All those in favor of opening the public hearing, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay. So first we'll hear from the petitioner, Lisa.
Hi, I apologize, I was just speaking with another customer about another issue. So was it first Arch Street?
The St. John's Pole.
So St. John's Pole, St. John's is intending to do an addition in the back of the church where they'll need three-phase power, and it's really kind of a tight situation. And this was kind of a really, we're going to squeak in transformers, a couple poles down and get their three-phase secondary to the, but it would have to come to this new pole in order to serve them because we need to get directly across the street from where the pole is on their property so we don't have an aerial trespass, is what we call it. So that is the pole that we are looking for on Elm Street.
And I have a memo from Felix Harvey to the department chair, the department head of the DPW saying that they've reviewed the records and visited the site to view the proposed possible addition of the pole number 8-50 on Elm Street, 203 Fourth West, actually from the intersection of Bedford Terrace, and there are no apparent conflicts with underground city utilities or public shade trees in the proposed location of the new Any other proponents or opponents, or anyone just interested in commenting on this? Sean, if you could just identify yourself too.
Good evening, my name is Sean Allen, I live in Whately, Massachusetts. I'm here as Chair of the Second Century Campaign for St. John's, which is what we're calling our expansion elevator project. And I appreciate the opportunity. We're needing three-phase power to power an elevator. Primary goal is handicap accessibility to our 126-year-old building, which has very antiquated systems. That is the primary goal, that is what we're after.
Are there any questions of the petitioners or anyone else wishing to speak on this item? I'll accept a motion to close the public hearing. So moved. Second. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you very much. That's one. So Lisa, yeah, while you're standing, we also have item 17.363, this is the public hearing regarding national grid pole petition for Arch Street. I'll accept a motion to open the public hearing. Motion's made by Counselor O'Donnell, seconded by Counselor LaBarge. All those in favor of opening the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
This request is for what we call a midspan pole. There is poles along the street, and if anybody has been up Arch Street recently, you can see that a lot of the older poles have recently been replaced and are in the process of getting swapped over. This particular pole, nine and a half, it falls pretty directly between pole nine and 10. Right now, the customer up at the top of the hill, and as you know, it's a pretty steep hill where houses are. Their service was ripped off of the house when a tree came down and took a very long service from pole 10 to the house. They're now trying to reroute that, and at this point, the service is tied to a tree, which we don't find to be safe practice, and we would need to set the midspan pole to actually hit the new point of attachment on the house to get clearance when it gets up high and, you know, high enough to, you know, when they're out in their yard, you've got a, you know, pole up high, or, I'm sorry, a house up high, you need to have the pole, you know, there to make sure you get the clearance for people that are out in the yard.
This also has, there are a memo from the DPW saying there are no apparent conflicts with underground city utilities or public shade trees in the proposed location of the pole. Anyone else wish to speak to this petition? Any questions? I'll accept a motion to close the public hearing. Motion's made, seconded. Counselor Bidwell, sorry. All those in favor of closing public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
And anyone opposed? Okay. All right, so that will come up for a vote in the consent agenda. So we also, this is, this is an announcement of a public hearing, which means we'll be seeing Lisa again in all likelihood. So this is item 17.365, pole petition for national grid on Woodmont Road. This is an announcement for a public hearing.
Oh, okay.
Then that'll take place on September 21st, our next meeting here in the council chambers at 7:05, and this is on the petition to erect poles, wires upon, along, under, or across one or more public ways. So put it on your calendar, be sure not to miss that, so.
Okay.
Thanks.
Terrific.
Thank you, Lisa. I'm not sure why this is out of the public, out of the consent agenda, the approval of the minutes?
Pam made a mistake.
Okay, so that would be in the consent agenda, okay.
Or, well, she said something about you should handle it separately.
Okay.
Since it's not in there.
Well, okay, since it's not in there, we'll do that directly.
Double approval of the August 17 meeting.
Second. Okay. Any discussion on the minutes from the last meeting? All those in favor of approving those minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now we come up to recognition, one minute announcements by counselors, counselors? Anybody got something? Counselor Shara.
I have two. So the first is the Second Annual Jackson Street School Carnival is coming up on Saturday, September 16th, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. That's at Jackson Street School. And anyone who went last year knows that it was a really fun, amazing time. There are games and prizes, a dunk tank, inflatable obstacle course, and a temporary tag-two parlor. So everyone should go to that. Again, September 16th, Saturday, 10 to 4:00. And the other announcement I have is that this, tomorrow, this Friday, for the Arts Night Out, there's the Chalk Art Festival, which goes from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. They'll be creating chalk art downtown, and then the top three will be awarded, the top three artists and their drawings will be awarded, their awards by the mayor at 5:00 at City Hall, and there's a family free draw behind thorns from 5:00 to 7:00.
Anyone else? The library would like you to know that on September 22nd, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the library will be an opportunity to enjoy wine, music, food, and conversation. There's a wine tasting, and tickets are $30 per person, they may be purchased at the Forbes Library at W-wwforbslibrary.org or at Liquor's 44. So put that on your calendar. Also, there will be, I can't believe that we're talking about something in October, but here you go. This, on October 9th, the Pulaski Day Parade of, by the, that's put on by the Polish Heritage Committee of Northampton, will be the 31st Annual Pulaski Day Parade in Northampton. Counselors are invited to attend and the public's, to participate, and the public's invited to attend, and yeah, it's part of our parade, start of the parade season, basically. So, anyone else? All right. So now we come up, the mayor does have a proclamation, he alerted me to, so, Your Honor.
Yes, good evening, counselors. I do have a proclam, a special proclamation to issue this evening. It's in honor of Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, September 2017. Whereas childhood cancer kills more children in the United States than asthma, pediatric AIDS, cystic fibrosis, diabetes, muscular dystrophy, and genetic anomalies combined. And whereas childhood cancers are a specific set of cancer diseases that affect children, they are not the same types of cancers found in adults. And whereas one in 285 children will develop cancer before the age of 20, and whereas the incidence of childhood cancer is steadily increasing at a rate of 0.6% per year, and no one knows why, and whereas childhood cancers are not the result of lifestyle factors or poor health, as are many adult cancers, and whereas 43 kids per day are diagnosed with cancer in the United States, and whereas worldwide, a child is diagnosed every two minutes, and whereas the month of September has been designated as a month to extend our support to children and their families who are fighting for a cancer-free life, so now therefore I, Mayor David J. Narcoitz, hereby proclaim September 2017 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Northampton, so that together, we may shine a light on childhood cancer, stand with those in need, and redouble our efforts to address childhood cancer in our community. In witness whereof, I have set my hand and imprinted the seal this 7th day of September in the year 2017. I wanted to invite two young women to accept this, Julia and Emma, who are with WeLoveRiley.org, which is a childhood cancer organization, and they actually requested this proclamation from the city of Northampton and several other communities. So I wanted to thank you and present it to you, and if you want to talk to folks about the organization you're involved in.
Sure. Thank you so much, Mayor.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Thanks.
Thank you, city of Northampton. We really appreciate you recognizing September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. You might know, as the mayor said, one in 285 children in the United States are diagnosed with pediatric cancer before the age of 20, and worldwide, a child is diagnosed once every two minutes. We are spreading awareness of the color gold to represent childhood cancer all month during September, and we thank the mayor and we thank the city of Northampton for supporting local and children in the national community and international community as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your advocacy. Thank you. Wayne here? Yeah, Wayne is here. Okay. So we have a second reading on item 17.372. This is a resolution in support of Senate Bill 619, that's an act to establish Medicare for All in Massachusetts. Motion's made and seconded to approve, so, I think Counselor LaBarge, you move to approve? And then you seconded? Okay. All right. Any further discussion on this? Okay. All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. That passes in second reading. And now, Wayne Fiden, this is the Office of Planning and Sustainability Presentation. This is an open space recreation multi-use plan from Director Wayne Fiden. Thank you.
Thank you. So Don's planning this presentation up, so just, mostly you haven't, weren't on council seven years ago, so just want to give you some quick discussion of what we're doing and where we're going in this process. So every seven years, the city adopts a open space recreation multi-use trail plan, and it's our blueprint for areas and all those activities. And it's sort of a bible, we use it a lot. It's brought in, in the last seven years, we've brought in $4 million of grants that are direct, outside grants, the CBA, that are directly attributable to this, to this, it's an important document for us, both in terms of bringing money, in terms of outlining what we are. What makes the plan more complicated than most is we try to get adopted by a lot of different boards, and so that means we go through the process. We can't go to a board and have them, you know, make a few changes and go to the next board and have a few more changes because it's hard to go back. So we try to sort of figure a way to keep the dialogue going as we go through the planning process, so when we go through the actual adoption, there's no surprises in the process. Under state law, planning board's the only board that has to adopt the plan, but we think it's important to go to other boards because the plan cuts across all those areas, so we're looking at doing accessibility for conservation and recreation, so we need to go to the disabilities committee. And obviously, we can't do anything without your approval in most things, so we want your endorsement, and we're dealing with conservation land and recreation land, so we want those boards' endorsement. So what we tend to do is ask the planning board to adopt the plan and ask every other board to endorse the plan, saying you're agreeing most things and you get a chance to vote on things separately in the process. So what I want to do is just sort of, when we did the plan seven years ago, it had 13 broad objectives that we tried to do, and I'm going to walk you through those 13 areas, talk just very briefly about what we've accomplished in the last seven years, and then talk sort of at the brainstorming level, what we think might be the objectives for the next seven years, and then talk about sort of the public process. But again, we'll be coming back to you probably in December or January, asking you to endorse the plan, so we want to get your input both now and, you know, the next few months to share things. Okay. Good to know it wasn't me.
Wow. That, that's a ring. That's a ring.
So if you read the plan, it's a very long document, and it's because we have to meet the state standards. Most of it I'm not going to talk about, half the plan is just inventory of all the land that we own, and all the goals that we have from our open, from our comprehensive plan. So again, I'm just focusing on these 13 broad areas. So the first one's conservation management, how do we actually manage our properties? In the last seven years, we've been really successful and had a lot of advances. We've been very aggressive about removing exotic plants, although I have to say, we still are falling behind. So probably everything I'm talking about tonight, I'm really proud of, the removal of exotic plants is the one area where we're still, even after doing a lot of work, we're still further behind than we were seven years ago, and that's true sort of throughout the country. We now have a half-time lands manager, and so that's been great about getting us to clean up a lot of our backlog of things, and actually great about letting us do a lot of work at lower cost. So just as one example, we hired Ty &amp; Bond about eight years ago to look at the Fitzgerald Lake Dam, and they came up with a series of recommendations, which would have cost about $300,000 to rehab the dam. We're about halfway through the list, and we've spent less than $15,000. And that's because we've had a person who's done a lot of the work, we've had lots of volunteers, and so we've found better ways to get to the same thing. It was important to, for example, one of the things we've done so far is armoring the dam. You all know there's a hurricane going on, two hurricanes going on right now, and the dam looks great, but if you started having a big hurricane, the water was turbulent, it could actually start washing away the dam. So we've brought in about 200 tons of flat rocks to put along the water's edge, so if water's turbulent, it's not going to eat away at the dam. So it's that kind of thing we've been trying to catch up on. We've redone all, we used to have signs that were made up from pressed treet wood and not in great shape, we've cleaned up all the signs, so just done a series of events, so we think our conservation areas are in much better shape, and particularly, it's about habitat management. Our top goal for managing property is for habitat preservation. So going forward for the next seven years, we hope to do more of the same and manage these properties better. We have a few sort of focus areas we want to do a little better job on. We've always paid attention to environmental justice for, there's basically low-income and minority communities, how well are they being served? We want to think about those a little bit more. So just as one example, we now have two community garden areas in the city. Florence Organic Fields, the Grow Food Northampton runs, and the property on Burnspur Road that the city runs. 800 plots, that's enough to serve most of our population with cars who go to community gardens. But we have residents in low-income housing projects who may not have cars and may not have the ability to go do them, so we're looking at little mini areas. At River Run, can we build a 20-plot community gardens? No one's going to drive there unless you're in River Run, but it's great to serve the residents of River Run who frankly aren't necessarily being served by the other areas. And so it's that kind of thing we want to focus on. We've played with just this one big goal, we have lots of miles of trails, and people are walking all the time there, but we don't, like Amherst does and like East Hampton does, we don't have one trail that goes the entire length, so we've talked about a Northampton One Trail, or maybe some other term, that basically is, you know, a 20-mile trail that does a full loop of the city. Some people want to hike the entire thing, for others it might just be symbolic. So again, trying to draw attention to these areas going forward. As you know, we've been trying to buy a lot of open space in pristine areas. We have a target of 25% of the city being, this was, we set seven years ago, 25% of the city being preserved is pristine land. We get a lot of attention when the mayor announced that 25% of the city is protected as open space, but just so there's not confusion, that's not the pristine land. That includes Le Park and watershed lands and farmland. So where about 20% of the city is preserved is pristine, 25% of the city is preserved as something. And so we want to think about what that is. Going forward, we just, these are numbers just targets to think about, but when we set the targets seven years ago, it was what we'll target for the next seven years. We need to come back and visit that. One of the things we need to do before we set the targets is about every five years, we've done a detailed assessment of looking at what's the actual effects on the tax rolls? What, you know, what is the land coming out for conservation and recreation, cost in terms of taxes we're not getting, how is that land redistributed? And so we need to, we need to update that assessment going forward, so we're doing it in the next few months, if we're doing it. And then if, if the biggest amount of our conservation areas are pristine land, that's primarily about wildlife and about climate change and about, you know, climate protection, all those really important things, we have lots of small conservation areas that serve particular neighborhoods. You wouldn't necessarily fly to Northampton, it's not the crown jewel of Northampton, you wouldn't say, this is the most amazing place, but for people who live nearby, it becomes really important. So, you know, Jim Nash was instrumental in getting us to acquire the Montview Avenue Conservation Area. Really wonderful piece of property that serves the neighborhood. It's not a crown jewel for the city, frankly, but it's really important for that neighborhood, for one of the densest neighborhoods in town. And so we manage those areas differently because they're really serving the neighborhood. We have a Jeep Eater Trail, where we allow jeeps to go. It's the only place in town, one of the few places in the state where off-road vehicles are embraced by municipalities, but the trail is almost pure rock, so they're not causing damage to conservation areas, and it serves an important recreational need. But we wouldn't claim that's a pristine land, it's, you know, it's part of our mix. So we want to keep thinking about how do we serve those areas? One of the areas that comes up a lot is sort of exactly what is our target for that land? So we have an amount of pristine land, we don't really have a target for how much land we're trying to preserve that serve neighbors, so we want to play with that. We've looked in particular Jeep Eater Trail, about two-thirds of the Jeep Eater Trails on our property, a little bit goes off our property, is that something we want to acquire? Which both serves this recreation need, but also is really important because where we own the land, we keep the jeeps on the rocks, so they're not causing problems. Where they leave our property, it may be less controlled. So trying to think about how do we serve populations and also, you know, preserve the resource area. The fourth, which we've been really successful on the last few years, has been farmland preservation. You all know, we funded a substantial amount of Grow Food Northampton's acquisition, not the city fund, with some CPA money and a lot of state grants that we got for the process. We've also preserved some farmland in the meadows, so it didn't look any different, but we preserved it in a way that it's never going to go anywhere. The biggest risk to farmland in Northampton 20 and 30 years ago was conversion to housing developments, and for the most part, most of the farmland in Northampton is no longer threatened with that kind of conversion, because the farmland outside the meadows has mostly been protected, not completely, but mostly, and the farmland in the meadows is floodplain, it's not going to be developed. But the biggest risk we have is actually land just lying foul and being lost. And so preserving farmland for us goes along with this next one, which is preserving farmers, right? So we know that we have less land under cultivation today than we did seven years ago. We actually have more farmers, we have young farmers starting up, but some marginal land has been lost. Now, some marginal land's always going to be lost, it doesn't, some of it doesn't make sense for farming, but trying to play with that, and what are the ways that we can deal with farming? You all know, you just passed recently, passed on to committee discussion about photovoltaics and farmland, and this has been one of the discussions. We had a discussion with the Ag Commission six years ago, they said we shouldn't allow photovoltaics on prime ag land, we don't want to lose prime ag land. But then we were trying to figure out a way to, how do we allow enough photovoltaics that we can help give farmers some supplemental income without allowing so much that we're converting farmland and losing the farmland? So that's what the ordinance that's going through the process now is all about, is trying to think about those things. And so we're playing with, you know, with the Ag Commission and different ways to protect farmers. So then the sixth category, which we're mostly done with, this is an area we've been really successful, has been the recreation acquisitions. So we've done two significant purchases at Sheldon Field. You don't see Sheldon Field growing because we're sort of land banking it, so it's still being farmed, but we own some land there that will serve future generations when we need it. We did a major acquisition at Connecticut River Greenway, and we did a massive acquisition, and it's now Florence Fields. So we created, you know, a new, our largest recreation area is brand new. So we've been very successful here. Going forward, we don't have any huge acquisitions, but there'd be some small ones. Sheldon Field is still sort of checkerboarded. We, the main parcel you see is recreation, then a couple of farmlands, there's some private land in between. As those properties become available, we'd like to fill in the checkerboard. Again, no immediate plans for Sheldon Field, but that's, that's an opportunity at some point in the future. There may be some other things. We get grants which have different conditions, and you know, we've done, expanded our bike path network with different funding. One of the funding sources that's very attractive only lets us use it if land's protected, if the city actually owns the land as open space. Some of our bike paths in town, we own by easement, and they're perfectly protected, we can use them just fine, but we're not eligible for grants. And so we may want to come back and acquire some of those properties. So for example, in Leeds, we expanded the rail trail north a third of a mile earlier this year. Where that trail ends was actually not where we ran out of money. It ends where we switched from owning the land in fee to where we own it only by easement. And so we weren't eligible to use that money to go further north, so we may want to play with some of those things in the coming years. And then what we had seven years ago is two separate goals, one was recreation and park development, and the second was waterfront park. We're merging them together because the waterfront park's done, we all see them there. And again, this has already been really successful, obviously, the marquee project was the various stages of Pulaski Park, which is now virtually done, and that was the biggest budget item and probably the biggest effect in the city in a long time on the park side of things. And then Florence Fields on the recreation area, and Connecticut River Greenway on a specific type of recreation. So very successful in that. And so we need to start thinking about what are the longer-term projects? Again, accessibility is really important. We've done a great job, and when I say accessibility is important, we're probably more successful at making our areas accessible than most towns. We just completed an audit of all of our conservation areas and recreation areas, and we're doing really well, but we also have some, some opportunities to go further. So accessibility is a goal, certainly thinking about, the Northampton Community Rowing has a semi-permanent boathouse, it probably has a life of about 10 years. They want to think on a longer-term boathouse, that's primarily going to be them who's doing that, but we want to think about what's our role in terms of supporting it. And then recreation's still working on their priorities, but both Sheldon Field and Mainz Field haven't been rehabbed in a long time, and at some point, we have to think about the cycle for doing grants there. And so you see that Le Park is not here? So Le Park is technically owned by the city, but privately managed, so they're eligible for same grants that we do, but we don't really do their long-term planning. So the fact that Le Park isn't on here doesn't mean they're not doing lots in terms of recreation development, it's just not what we're including in our plan. Ninth one's recreation maintenance, you know, the DPW maintenance division's doing a good job maintaining recreation areas. One of the things that's been new in the last few years is there's now a Friends of Northampton Parks and Recreation Group that works very closely with the Department of Parks and Recreation and the Parks and Recreation Commission, but they have an opportunity to do outside fundraising to bring a community in. They've primarily been focused on Florence Fields, but they've worked on some other projects with us. projects with us. So we have to put conservation restrictions on some, on various properties we buy, and they've been willing to hold conservation restrictions. They've actually lowered our cost. Whenever we preserve land and have to put a restriction on it, they're much lower cost than other options. So, so that's been wonderful going forward. And the only change, I know this is subtle, but seven years ago, we called it Recreation Maintenance. Now, I want to think about Recreation Management. And just, you know, it's subtly different in terms of, this isn't just about DPW responding to a ticket that something should be fixed, but just sort of thinking philosophically about the approach. So the mayor initiated a program where Florence Fields is managed organically. And that isn't just a series of steps for managing, so not using herbicide. That isn't just a series of steps, that sort of has to be a fundamental systems approach for how do you manage that. It's still a test, partly works, partially doesn't work. But sort of thinking about those sort of more systems-thinking type approach. And then partnerships, particularly, I'm thinking about the Friends of North Hampton Recreation, but there may be other partners moving forward as well. Multi-use trail development, you know, it's another area, I think we've been very successful. We've done everything from the park and ride lot in Leeds, and part of the park and ride lot, we slipped in a, a bike path access point. We're trying to have places for people, so the park and ride lot works during the week for people going to work. And on the weekend, if you want to, you want to bicycle, you don't have to park in a neighborhood, you can park right there and get on the bike ride. We bought the land in Connecticut River Greenway, which is, someday, this is many, many years in the future, is a bike path all the way to Elm Court and Hatfield. We just closed on land in June off Burt's Spit Road. It's primarily a conservation area, but that's partially extending a bike path all the way up to the sort of the Ryan Road School neighborhood. Mass Central Trail in Leeds, I mentioned, we just expanded that. And then obviously, a major construction project going on is the tunnel underneath the, the bike path. Then incidentally, I know this is digression, but you may start getting calls for, for many months, people have been slipping by and walking, using the trail. At least it's been a construction site. As of yesterday, it looks like it's done, but it's still barricaded. So you may start getting calls from your constituents, "Why is it barricaded when it looks like it's done?" And that's because it's, it's closed to the public as long as the contractor owns it because they're responsible for the liability, and it can't be done until National Grid gives them power. So there's still, we need, we ask for lights as a safety measure, we ask for closed cameras as a safety measure. So the contractor sort of pulled off the site for a little while, but they still own the site and won't be back till there's power. So it's barricaded, people shouldn't be going there, or at least we shouldn't be blessing people going there, so. So going forward, looking at a few things, so, so the mayor just announced yesterday that we've signed up for a, a bike share program. It's a regional bike share program, that's five hundred bikes that are electric assist bikes. And the reason electric assist is really important for this bike share program is that we know the typical demographic who rides bikes in this community and everywhere else is young professionals in their twenties and thirties. Other people ride, you know, I'm not in my twenties and thirties, and I ride. But, you know, we know by far that's the biggest demographic. And we're trying, we, we have a strong commitment to social justice. We want our bike share to serve all populations, all incomes, all physical levels, and the assist, the, the bike assistance lets that work. The problem is, as of today, we don't allow electric assisted bike on the bike paths. You see a lot of them out there. If you go to any bike paths and sit there for a day, you're going to see something out there. It made sense when City Council passed that ordinance some number of years ago, because at the time, there really weren't pedal-assist bikes. There were electric scooters, and we don't want electric scooters. They go fast, they're heavy, they, but electric assisted bikes are sort of a different creature. And so the mayor's announcement sort of forces our hand, we need to think about that. It's how do we do that? And so we actually have in my office now a, a model bike, which the mayor was riding around today. But, you know, we can all give you tours, anytime you want to borrow the electric assist bike and go around and see what it's like, we're, we're absolutely happy to lend it to you and lend you a helmet as well. So that, and then there's lots of bike expand, bike path expansions. I won't go to all of them. Some are twenty years out, you know, going up to Hatfield, going towards the Ryan Road School. That's a very long-term plan. But we do want to think about something different, which is access ramps. So we have, have a target of serving about seventy-five percent of the population easily by bike paths. And we're pretty close to that, we're about sixty-five percent right now. And we've defined that, what's serving easily, but how close it is to the bike path. But the problem is the distance is a little misleading. So if you're in Leeds, for example, there's an on-ramp to the bike path by the, by Look Park and by the VA Medical Center Park and Ride Lot. And then there's no single access points until you get all the way up to Mulberry Street. So very long run, you can't get. And so if I quickly buffer the bike path by half a mile, I'll say, "I'm serving all these people, but they can't get there." And in fact, we're having a problem with what we call desire lines. People are cutting up the hill to get to the bike path because they want to get there so much. And that's great, I have no problem with that, but they're actually causing erosion. DPW has had to do a maintenance to, to fix those. And so thinking about on-ramps in Leeds in particular, where this is a strong section, and then on the old historic bike path, the first one we did thirty-five years ago, where there's a lot of places where the paved roads come within fifty feet of the bike path, but there's no technically legal connection, how do we do on-ramps there? And so again, we're, we're looking at some longer-term projects, but the shorter term in some ways is more important. Jackson Street Ramp was one of our big successes four years ago. We, we had a similar thing, we had lots of desire lines that people were going up the hill, but you couldn't really quite get there. And so we, we want to play with that going forward. And then something that was in our plan seven years ago, but really started taking off about two years ago, is this pavement to parks program. This is taking unloved, unused section of pavement that might be better served as a very small park. So we've done a few of these. We've raised, we had, I think, two hundred different donors who helped raise ten thousand dollars for Cracker Barrel Alley, and then we were matched by a state grant. We're, we're sort of working with designing, to work with the butters before we do anything. The butters had some concerns, we're trying to address those concerns. We have a movable parklet, which last year was tested in front of Cracker Barrel Alley, this year in front of City Hall. We got a grant from the Center for Disease Control through the State Department of Public Health. But the condition of the grant is it can't stay anywhere for more than a year because we're using it as a test. It's, it's not considered equipment, it's considered a diagnostic. So it moves around as we test different areas. Amber Lane was privately built on city property as a parklet. You'll be asked to vote later tonight on a parklet right behind you, behind the Roundhouse parking lot. And then just today, the mayor led a tour down, down Pleasant Street for our newest very small parklet right on the corner of Pleasant Street and Hockaman Road. So sort of thinking about those efforts, again, these are tiny parklets, but thinking about what are the, you know, what are the opportunities for moving them forward? What are the other places where we can have these going forward? There's an additional piece of land on the other side of Hockaman Road, which we hope becomes another parklet, and I talked about the Roundhouse already, so all these things are part of it. And then almost done, just two more. So we used to just focus on recreation for recreation's sake and conservation for conservation's sake. We started thinking about, and we also separately, you all know this, worked very hard to preserve the city's history, whether it's preserving buildings or art murals or other things. Until seven years ago, we hadn't really connected the two. We, we thought of conservation land separate from the landscape. And yet, some of the landscape that we use has a really rich history. So what we call Florence Fields was also part of the Underground Slave Railway, it was important farmland that's there, that's eligible for the National Register. And when we bought some land in Leeds that had a, a house on it and had an old sawmill on it, and a house was falling apart, an old sawmill on it and some farm implements deep in the woods, like you go in the woods and you can't imagine there's ever farming, but there's a farm implement in the middle of the woods. And so we started, we used to think, "Oh, this is garbage, we should clean this up." We've now started thinking carefully about how do we preserve that history? You know, I know that the entire state was cleared of trees a hundred years ago. My daughter doesn't know that. And so how do we preserve that history so that my daughter's wandering through the woods and suddenly sees a farm implement? It's like, "Oh, that really was true. My dad wasn't lying to me." And so, so we've done more of this about the heritage landscapes. Some, you know, we re, we've been trying to rebrand what we used to call the Manhattan Rail Trail. We've now called the New Haven and North Hampton Canal Line Trail. Because it goes, if you go to, if any of you go to One Canal Street in New Haven where IKEA is, that's the far end of the, the canal that comes right to North Hampton. And so we'd like to put that on the map. And so we've been doing a little bit of work in that area. And, and so some of that's just been interpretation. We've been successful, we've worked with Leeds Civic on some interpretation in Leeds. We've worked with North Hampton Community Rowing, an interpretation at Connecticut River. But we have an acquisition, which you all approved recently, which is partial about building the Mineral Hills Conservation Area, but it's partial about preserving lead mines. So three hundred and fifty years ago, to about two hundred and twenty years ago, somewhere thereabouts, I'm not exactly sure of the dates, when you needed a bullet, I guess it wasn't called a bullet, but you needed to shoot something under your gun, whatever it was called at the time, you would mine it locally. And then some number of years ago, I think when railroads started hitting the Midwest, but again, I'm not, this isn't my area, it started being, it was cheaper to produce a bullet in Ohio than to produce it locally, and so all the lead mines collapsed. But there's this wonderful piece of property, spectacular lead mines, some really interesting, you know, all the, all the rock people in town know it because some really interesting minerals are associated with it. But you have these old metal shafts that go down. So trying to think about that, just telling a slightly different story is part of what we're doing. And then finally, what brings some of these together, and we spent a lot of time on this in the last few years, is just how do we tell the message to get people involved? So we've redone all our signs, which used to be in lousy shape, and now I think all of our signs are in good shape. We've redone the kiosks along the bike path, I think they're all in pretty good shape. We have signs on, you know, the bridge underneath Main Street, which wasn't just an art project, it was also sort of a wayfinding project. We wanted to send the message on Main Street, what's above. And so those have all been the kind of things we've been working on. And going forward, we're going to keep trying to work on some of those things. We've gotten out of the printing business, so we don't print brochures anymore. Friends of North Hampton Trails and Greenways do, but we don't. But we've been trying to think of other ways we can information out that's lower cost to us and informs the public. So we're sort of taking this on a road to different boards, you know, our plan is to get each of the regional adopting boards early on in the process. That's what, I'm here with you tonight, both sub-boards know what's going on and solicit comments. We'll be doing a series of workshops and walks, we're going to start in September sixteenth with a bike ride, the length of the, the Mass Central path, and we're hoping that neighbors come out along the way to say where they think we should have on-ramps and where they don't. Some neighborhoods want on-ramps desperately, some neighborhoods desperately don't want on-ramps. And so as we prioritize our future grants, we want to think about what are the ones that neighborhoods want? At least to the extent there's a consensus, there's not always consensus. So that would be the first thing, September sixteenth. Then we'll be doing a, a workshop on the plan, trying to get people out. We'll do something like this presentation to say, we're not claiming it's a blank slate, we've been doing this for forty years, this planning, but we want to get people's input before we've gone too far. Then we go back and start putting together the plan and come back to the community. That date's not quite a set, but hopefully in November, we get people's input in the process, and then come back to everyone to adopt it. I will say, for those who've been around for a long time, it sounds like we actually have fewer public forums, and it's actually true for two reasons. One is we're trying to use more technology. So we're going to be using WikiMapping, for example, that lets people go onto a map on site and make recommendations. But the other thing is, our experience seven years ago, was some people would come to four different public hearings and say the same thing four times, and other people would come to one public hearing, and the people who said it four times sort of thought that they should have four times as much weight. And that's really not fair for the people who can own, you know, who work for a living and only come once. So we're trying to sort of have better hearings, hopefully well-attended, but not, you know, sort of ones that encourage people to come twelve times. That's what I got.
Any questions, comments of Councilor LeBarge?
Wayne, on the boundary markers, because I know on my ward, you worked with me very closely with residents on that, especially when we bought conservation land from our private owners. And apparently, seeing on your plan that apparently you have caught up with all the boundary markers, is that throughout the city or?
We haven't caught up with all of them. So we used to not survey all the property. We're surveying all the properties. So we have completed surveying the Mineral Hills, about ninety-five percent done through Broadbrook Fitzgerald Lake, and about ninety percent done through the Salma Hills. So we're almost done with the surveys. Any new property we buy, we're surveying. Our conservation manager is going through and marking all the trails. We have two, you see in this picture one of them, we have various markers. We have markers that face out, so when you're entering a conservation area, it tells you what the rules are, and markers that face in. So I would say we're about seventy percent through marking our property boundaries and about thirty percent through, in terms of blazes, about thirty percent through putting these blue things up, but it's absolutely in our program, we are moving forward on that.
Thank you.
Councilor Duff.
I would just note that, first of all, thank you for the presentation and all the work you've done. And at one point, you mentioned that North Hampton in and of itself isn't necessarily a jewel that would attract people from, from afar and wide, but it's very important to the local people who live here. And I, I take your point, and I think that's right. But I think with the work that you've done and the mayor's done and others over a long period of time, I mean, I think we actually are approaching jewel status. If we're not quite there yet, I think you have something very special to our North Hampton, and I'm just very appreciative of all the work that's gone into it. And a lot of that is part of the process. So just to add for the record, I noticed you had a list of meetings, and we just spoke today about, the Transportation Parking Commission is another date that can be added. That'll be September nineteenth, Tuesday.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you too, Wayne, for the, for the presentation. And it really is, when you, when you see all of that work pulled together, it's, it's an impressive piece of work and a lot of, a lot of vision for what's to come, so very impressive. I did have one question. On, on the, on the target of, the revised target of thirty-five percent for open space, up from twenty-five percent, what is, what's, what's, what's that based on? Is, is that just kind of an arbitrary, we've, you know, we, we set twenty-five, we hit it, so therefore we're going to go further? How, how do you establish that?
Yeah. It, it is sort of arbitrary, there's no magic behind it. So certainly that's true. Just to be clear though, we have the target of twenty-five percent pristine, we're only suggesting that go to twenty-eight pristine. We had never set a target for total open space. And so that was part of it, it just seemed useful to have a target. This partially came out of questions for councilors no longer here a few years ago who asked, "What is the target?" And so he asked us to set up a target, and so that's what began the process. Partially, it's, I think, we want, it was a full disclosure thing. Yes, there's no magic to the number, but it seems like it's something that's good about having a community debate that's out there. The other thing is, I have another target which isn't in here, and this is sort of more cross-cutting, but one of the targets that my office has worked on, the mayor certainly supported, is we've really worked hard on trying to make sure in our open space acquisitions, we're not artificially inflating the value of land. We're not making it more difficult for a first-time homebuyer to buy a building on. So, so partly, the numbers for me are just sort of taking, how do we do that? How do we make sure that we're not competing with places where we really want to have development? So we, you know, you all know we buy a lot of land, it comes before you, but we get as, as often pitched pieces of land that we pass on, that say, "No, this is a place that we'd like to be developed," or we do a limited development project. So it's partially based on where do I think we can, what number can we get to without stopping the amount of development that we need so people who want to live in North Hampton can do so affordably? But there's no magic to it.
Well, just to play devil's advocate a little bit, I, I would argue that rather Well, just to play devil's advocate a little bit, I would argue that rather than pick a number, a really comprehensive and strategic planning process, I would say, in broad terms, these are the areas worthy of protection, where it's not going to have adverse effects in any development potential, and then calculate what it is. And maybe it turns out to be 36%, maybe it turns out to be, you know, 20, 27%, but, you know, it's based on on-the-ground reality as opposed to picking a number from just an observation. Yeah. Council Shaw.
This may be a silly question, but it's never stopped me before. Can you define pristine? Does that mean has never been developed, or that is just?
Nothing in Northampton. I mean, everything was cut down for timber production, sheep doing. So it's a good question. I think for us, what we define pristine is our primary management objective is wildlife. So when we do trail work, so we've tended to see it's the city's role to preserve land, and it's neighborhoods who get to build trails. And some neighborhoods want to build trails and some don't, we don't generally go there. Where we get involved with trails is where we see trails growing, that people keep going around a wet spot, then we might cover the wet spot for habitat protection. So it's areas where we think, you know, the Park Service uses wilderness as a place where man's a visitor. We're more urban areas, that's not quite true, but where's the area we think the impact of people is minimal, and we in essence have mostly natural systems, as opposed to the places where we're allowing jeeps or that kind of like this. But it's not, it's definitely not pristine in a sense of National Park Service wilderness areas.
Council Klein, and then Council Nash.
Wayne, I have a couple of questions about hunting. It was on the slide, but you didn't talk about.
Yep.
So you talked about low visitor areas where you're thinking about expansion of hunting. And they happen to all be in, pretty much in Ward 7, a little bit in Ward 6. And some of those areas are fairly newly acquired, and so when you talk about low visitor areas, I'm wondering, there's kind of a chicken/egg thing there, like, you know, are there ways that we can encourage people to expand their hiking and walking in those areas so that they're not low visitor areas and that might preclude hunting in those areas? So I have a question about that. And then the other thing is, is it because of demand, local demands for hunting areas, or is it because of animal management that we want to expand hunting in the city? What's the rationale behind the idea of expanding the hunting?
So let me do the second one first, where the demand comes from. So the demand is definitely about user demand. It's not so much from wildlife standpoint, but it's about user demand in an area which doesn't have adverse impact on wildlife. So, you know, so it doesn't necessarily enhance, you know, if you allow deer hunting, for example, what you're reducing is the number of deer who starve to death in a difficult winter, but you're not really, so there's no disadvantage from hunting, deer in particular. There's no disadvantage for hunting because the deer are going to be starving to death. And some people say hunting is more humane, I'm not sure I care about, I'm not sure that's my issue. But it certainly isn't harming the species, it's probably not helping the species. The population's going to reach with the amount of food that's there to support it, whether you hunt or not, particularly where you're mostly doing antler hunting. So antlers, you know, males are not monogous, so it doesn't matter how many male deer you shoot, it doesn't have much of an effect on the population. So we're, so hunting, but so we're not doing it either, it's not neither good nor bad for the populations. And yes, we have a lot of demands. There are certainly people, we hear at every public hearing, that say, we're taxpayers too, or a lot of us are here, every time you buy conservation land, we're losing hunting opportunities, we should allow hunting in every conservation area. What we're looking at is a very small minority of the properties, but allowing some opportunities. So we allow hunting currently at Rainbow Beach, and we sort of have to, because we manage that jointly with Department of Food and the Wildlife people, whatever they're called, Fish and Wildlife. And in return for them managing our property, they want us to have the same rules as they have. But that area doesn't have very good public access. We allow hunting, but it's hard to get there. We allow bow hunting at Beaverbrook Conservation Area. Beaverbrook has a very large stream along the road, so it's virtually impossible, except sometimes in the dead of winter when everything's frozen, to get across that anyway. So almost by definition, users are always going to be low there. There is a snowmobile trail that crosses the middle of the property, and so we get some users who go through there, but they, it's pretty far from the road, so it's also probably going to be never a really high-use area. The mineral hills one's different. Mineral hills, right now, so we have several different conservation areas that are called Mineral Hills Conservation Area, and it's sort of aspirational. We call them all the same thing because we anticipate we'll be tying them together. So the area off Chesterfield Road is low use. If we ever tie it together with Turkey Hill Road, it might potentially be high use, and there's nothing that would stop us from coming and revisiting it that.
You're talking about Roberts Hill?
No. No, further west. If you go to the Roberts Hill Reservoir and south of that, so almost to the West Hampton Town Line, we have a conservation area. Doesn't really go anywhere, it's very overgrown and very tick-ridden, and so most people don't go there. But if we someday acquired some property that goes, that would go south, that might change. And we've certainly changed, you know, the, it's the Conservation Commission who adopts the rules for hunting, and they do change the rules. They just allowed it recently at Beaverbrook, where they didn't allow it before, they just, with your blessing, banned it at a spot at Fitzgerald Lake where it didn't make sense. So.
Yes.
Hang on a second, Council, because Council Nash was next, and.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
So this is all really exciting, that, you know, over the next few months, the public can have a lot of effect on these things. And it's really cool to, you know, during this presentation, I remember all those meetings, you know? We talked about access to the river for people to, you know, canoe and kayak, and, you know, and people to be able to, you know, more gardening, and we have that out in Florence. So this is really quite cool. You mentioned access to Rainbow Beach. Could that be considered as part of this, particularly pedestrian access? I know that there's a number of people in Ward 3 who'd be interested in seeing pedestrian or bike access to Rainbow Beach.
Yeah, so I, of course, told you our successes, so let me tell you one of our big failures.
But we're still working on it.
So I had this on the slide under agriculture, so let me come back to this. You just see this in detail, the very last item here, this is our goal for the next seven years, is deal with security in the meadows, hours of public access, and you see this language, potentially a grand compromise. We've been unable to find this. So we know that we have a significant problem. The farmers are absolutely right. There are dogs that defecate in the fields, and the state, federal rules have gotten much stricter, and so sometimes it makes their crops unusable, if they have that. And we know that there are people who drive through the fields and do donuts, and have had a significant amount of crop damage as a result of that. And so the farmers are understandably upset about that. And so there's some land where are not public roads, they don't allow anybody to use at all, and that, of course, makes people who want to walk down there unhappy. We also know there's some benefits of people using land because most of us are good, and we're sort of our guardians, and we watch things, and we call the police. And so with ag commission support, we've, we had this conceptual grand compromise of, how about these roads which the public is using but isn't technically allowed to use? How about maybe gating some of those roads, not, you know, at night, and open them to the public during the day, so the farmers would be more permissive about public use in the time we're not having problems, and be more protected at public use at night, and we could solve some of those problems. So Rainbow Beach comes up because that land is landlocked by four different property owners. They're worried that if they let us have access to Rainbow Beach, it's the camel's nose, the camel's nose in the tent, and suddenly the public will have access to these roads, and then suddenly we'll take off and there'll be problems. And so we think if we could solve this overall legitimate concern that farmers have about misuse, that we could solve that. But it's hard to separate that as a little thing by itself.
Well, I just want to say, the people who are interested in having access are not interested in doing donuts out there, that they're, you know, mainly just, you know, want to go out and be able to spend the day. What I've heard is a really pretty site, I've never been there, and that, so I think there's, there's a lot of overlap in interest there. The last thing I wanted to add, you gave bee credit for the Modview Conservation Area, and it really belongs with my wife, Dora, who worked with Wayne to negotiate that, so thank you.
He has to go home tonight, so it's. Council LeBarge.
Wayne, you just talked about Turkey Hill Road. On the further end of it, are you talking about allowing for hunters to go in and shoot?
Not on Turkey Hill Road, that's not what I'm suggesting.
Way in the back.
No, I'm suggesting way up on Chesterfield Road.
Oh, okay.
But, you know, so that's part of the conversation. So we know that, and I'm not a hunter, and so if anyone's hunters, I hope no one takes this as an insult, but we know that, I used to live in Vermont, so I dealt with rifle hunting, so there's more potential problems. So Massachusetts doesn't allow rifle hunting, so, you know, bullet goes a lot further from rifle. But we know the people who walk back to land, you know, who carry their gun away, that they're not shooting, they get to a land where they're allowed to hunt, tend to be the good hunters and aren't causing the problems. And the people who don't want to leave the road, you know, who want to be five feet from the road because it's easy, you know, to hunt there, tend to be the ones we have greater misuse problems. And so we do play with, are there ways to encourage the hunters who are wonderful citizens and who are doing a really good job, and ways to discourage the yahoos who are the ones causing the problems? Hunters are exactly like every single other user group. Most of them are good, and there's a few bad ones. And so we're trying to figure out, how do we encourage the good ones and discourage the bad ones?
I remember the meetings we had on what areas for hunting and so forth, and I had quite a bit of people.
Yeah, absolutely.
On my ward.
I'm sure you're going to hear the same thing this time again. I think it's, and that's why I think it's a legitimate issue. And what we got last time around is the open space plan said, this is something we should work on, we should figure out what those areas are. And in the seven years, Conservation Commission did open one area up, the Beaverbrook area, but it's only one area, it's only bow hunting, so it certainly hasn't really, the hunting community doesn't really feel like it's met the needs out there. And let me come back to Jeepeter, because it's an example, I think, of a partnership that worked. When we first came before City Council acquired that property, this is eight years ago, you were council at the time? I'm making up the time, I'm very good at remembering dates, but about eight years ago. There was a lot of concern from people in the Jeep community about, would we cut them off? And they have done an amazing job of managing their own, of stopping the bad yahoos, of trying to control the use. They just recently did a cleanup and took three truckloads of trash out of there. They approached us to say, we do have a few areas where people are leaving the trail where you're not causing damage and going into the woods, and they approached us to say, cool, we've got to fencing, not fencing, but signage to keep people on. And they've really sort of, the fact that they're a little bit nervous, frankly, about losing this franchise, has been very successful. And that's sort of, I think that's our model, we want to get, how do we get, you know, some user experience for different groups in a way that's, you know, this is one trail that's a quarter of a mile long and one conservation area, but how do we provide some of that opportunity in a way that doesn't ruin it, other people's user experience, and particularly doesn't ruin the habitat? But so hunting will be exactly the same kind of issue.
Any other questions, comments? It's worth noting, you know, my entire life living in this area, of course, the anomaly in Northampton is that, and we've commented on this, we're on the river, we're on the Connecticut River. And until recently, really didn't have much in the way of municipal public access. But even then, it's still, we have our back to the river, one of the greatest resources imaginable. And I don't know if there, if you guys consider this more in your meta vision, and how to expand access to the river and use and recreational use of the river beyond the Green River Parkway right now.
Yeah, we, we haven't had a lot of discussions, frankly. I mean, obviously, Connecticut River, Greenway is our biggest success story that's out there. We've played with a little bit. We were doing invasive clearance project on the older farmland we owned off Damon Road, the 16 acres off Damon Road to city-owned, and we cleared about an acre of invasives that was just north of that. And our original vision was particularly for River Run. River Run's funny, because it certainly fits that. River Run is literally 300 feet from the Connecticut River, and probably the kids who are under 16 know how to get there, and probably other people have never even seen the river, it's sort of hidden there. And so we looked at the invasive project, thinking, maybe this is a great opportunity to open that up, at least for River Run residents, are there other ways to do that? So ours has been more sort of opportunity-based, we don't, no, we don't.
Catch, just catch, scan, then.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, it really does seem rather strange, and in fact, actually, you know, historic paintings representing Northampton, of course, the principal feature is the river. It's what established this as a, as a community. And so by and large, many people aren't even aware of the river unless they get stuck in traffic on the bridge, and that's, that's the extent of their river experience.
We do have one thing in the multi-use trail plan section that we did seven years ago, that requires work for partners, so it hasn't gone anywhere, but the state, so it's State Railroad Trail on the east side of the railroad tracks, and the City Railroad Trail on the west side of the railroad tracks, the tunnel will sort of marry them together. So we played with, coming off the State Railroad Trail, could you wind a little spur down to the river and go underneath the Coolidge Bridge? There's actually a little spot you could walk through and come up to Riverbank Road, and end at Riverbank Road, but sort of suddenly create an opportunity for people to go down there, bicycle in the meadows, still appealing, you know, it would really require most Mass DOT and Department of Conservation Recreation, because it's their property, but at least that part's in the plan, is sort of one small piece towards what you're talking about.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Thank you very much for your presentation, Wayne, I appreciate that. Hour up to the consent agenda, and that includes, but does not include the minutes, because we've already done that, but the item 17.343 is to approve the petition for Elm Street at St. John's Church location. Also, item 17.363 is to approve a petition for the Arch Street location. Item 17.366 is to approve appointments to various committees scheduled to be taken up by the Committee on City Services on, why does it say this? On September 5th, it's already happened.
Yeah, and I can actually give a report on that.
Okay.
I was going to ask that we take C and D out of the consent agenda after you read them.
Okay, all right, so the requests, all right, why don't, why don't we remove those now, and then I'll read them?
Read and read them later.
Okay, so, okay, so item seventeen, C and D on your agenda, item 17.366 and 17.371 will deal with, out of the consent agenda. Also, item 17.385 is to refer appointments to the Whiting Street Fund Committee, to the Committee on City Services. And the Whiting Street Fund Committee is Joseph Musterco, 312 Chesterfield Road in Leeds. The term starts July 2017, expires June 2020. Andrea Murray of 54 Day Avenue in Northampton, the term to start July 2017, expiring June 2020. Michael Shaughnessy of 575 Bridge Road, 115 in Florence, the term to start July 2017, expiring June 2020. Michael Quinlan of 712 Bridge Road in Florence, term to start July 2017, expiring June 2019. And then Marilyn Richards of 20 Bridge Road, number eight in Florence, term to start July 2017, expiring June 2018. And that's for referral. So I'll accept a motion on the consent agenda?
No, to approve.
And seconded? Okay. All right. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Back to the items that were called out. What did I just do with it? Oh, wait a minute, holy cats, I missed, I did miss one item. I missed item 17.371. That's the ones that you want to refer.
Yeah, well, I, well, what I can do is I can report on the result of the referral to the September 5th meeting.
Okay, I'll read those and then we'll refer to you. So item 17.366 is to approve appointments to various committees. On the Arts Council, Melissa Lewis Gentry of 292 and a half South Street in Northampton, this is a term to start August 2017, expiring June 2020. This is a new appointment, filling the expired term of Eric Olson. The Board of Registriers, Daniel Polacek of 95 Jackal Street in Northampton, the term to start August 2017, expiring June 2020. This is a new appointment, filling the expired term of Sandra Halliwell. And then the Planning Board, Alan Versen of 508 Kennedy Road in Leeds, term to start March 2015, expiring June 2018, that's a reappointment. And then also item 17.371, this is to approve the appointment of Martha Lyon as a historical commission representative to the Community Preservation Committee.
I'll move approval of both those items.
Second.
Okay, and as to discussion.
So what I can do is, well, I'll just report that we did have a positive recommendation from the Committee on City Services for the appointment to the Arts Council of Melissa Lewis Gentry, and Board of Registriers, Daniel Polacek, and I was going to refer to Councilor O'Donnell, who spoke with Alan Versen, if that's, but that was a neutral recommendation from the committee.
I would like to ask for the removal of Mr. Versen, so we can vote on him separately from these other appointments, if that's okay.
Okay, sure.
I agree with that.
Okay. So, so far, so we have Melissa Lewis Gentry for the Arts Council, and Daniel Polacek for the Registriers. So.
And then I'll say that the appointment of Martha Lyon also received a positive recommendation from the committee.
Okay. So those two items taken as a group with the, with the one candidate pulled out separately for further discussion. So that's item 17.366 and item 17.371. Let's see, all those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Now to Mr. Versen's appointment discussion. Council O'Donnell, did you want to speak to the neutral recommendation?
Do you need a motion on this?
Yes, please. Yeah, would you offer one?
I'd move approval of the appointment of Alan Versen to Planning Board.
Okay, so a second? Okay, now to the discussion.
Yeah, thank you. I wanted to talk about this appointment separately because I'm actually not inclined to favor this appointment, and I wanted to explain my vote to my colleagues. First, I'll say a word on the process. It's always a little awkward, although it doesn't happen frequently, that the council will turn down or even consider turning down appointments. But that's because of our charter, and the mayor makes appointments, and the council vets them. So I want to say upfront that with regards to this appointee, I think it's someone who has served intelligently and thoughtfully, actually on the Planning Board. And I'd like to describe what I think are important philosophical differences that caused me to, will cause me to vote in the negative on this one. It's hard to gauge how to evaluate members of the Planning Board, or it can be a little tricky, because like on the City Council, frankly, most of the votes are unanimous. And in this case, we're talking about an associate member, and because of the state law, state laws that establish the Planning Board, associate members vote on permits, but there are some things that they don't vote on, although they participate in discussion. So if you want to do an evaluation, I think you have to go to the statements that have[1785.66] been made and the philosophies that you interpret from those statements. I actually voted in favor of this appointee when he was first appointed in 2014. And it was in the ordinance committee, as we called it back then. And subsequently, the same year, through ordinance, through joint committee meetings with the Planning Board, we tackled what actually to me was the, probably the most important thing I feel like I've participated in on the City Council, which were the revisions to the ordinance about zoning for seven or more units in the urban residential districts, B and C. And I remember, actually, I wasn't the only one involved. Counselor Shera and I hosted a forum for residents of the Fort Hill Lyman area. Because it, and actually Counselor Nash was there as well, although he wasn't a counselor back then. He was already very involved in zoning. And people came to the meeting and they, they expressed how concerned they were about the zoning changes. And there was, there was so much discussion, actually, we delayed the vote on and extended the deadline to act on it at least once. But out of that meeting and out of the, out of the concerns I heard from people I represent, I brought forward jointly with Counselor Shera, a number of amendments to what the Planning Department had recommended for the zoning. And the three principal ones that I would like to highlight had to do with park and civic space requirements for when you build something of seven or more units. Affordability standards and environmental and energy standards. And I was very, actually very proud of the work that the council did getting into the details of zoning. There was a, a joint ordinance and planning board meeting where we hashed out all these details, probably to most people the most boring thing in the world. But in fact, zoning is essentially, essentially important to the city. And I'd like to just review some of the statements that I recall Mr. Verson providing. And I, I checked the minutes in the video to confirm them. And I'll just mention two just briefly. One had to do with park space. We added a requirement that there be more park space, so it's not just concrete. And the quote from this appointee was, "I sense the language as drafted says it has to be desirable for residents of the project." In other words, the park space requirement. "It's not clear to me, I can't understand why city zoning ordinance should require that residents that buy or rent into development have to be happy. Why is it our job to protect the people who voluntarily choose to live there?" It's important because the free market doesn't necessarily deliver pristine, we used to talk about pristine, pristine results all the time. Of course, people have a choice, but it's incumbent upon the city, in my opinion, to set certain standards so that what we build is in the public interest and protects those who need it. So it's a philosophical question. And to that philosophy, there was a second quote, I'll just give you briefly, about energy, energy standards. We, we wanted to require that there be stricter, stronger energy standards in zoning. And that quote is, "I have reservations about having a requirement for home energy standards. I think it's great to have high energy standards, but to impose it as part of zoning, which to me, my mind, my understanding, has to do with structures and density." And sort of paraphrasing, and now the quote again, "and location relative to other structures." I don't know why that's part of the zoning. So what I'd like to, what I, what I observed at that time and what kind of bothered me ever since was that I think zoning is not just about setbacks and dimensions and loc— I think there are certain principles that go into it. And energy standards are certainly one that are very important, in addition to affordability standards, in addition to park space and other things. And I don't want to misrepresent the appointees' quotes, but they are there for anyone to read. I think that when we appoint people to the Planning Board, it's our responsibility to, to make the best judgment we can about who we're putting on there. And indeed, if I understand correctly, as an associate member, this appointee didn't vote on the ordinance. Wouldn't have been able to, I believe. But the ordinance passed unanimously. But as we all know, the City Council knows, a lot of things pass unanimously. But what happens before the vote is very important, amendments, discussion, the Planning Board especially, the conditions that are put on projects. The discussions and questions that are raised ultimately affect specific projects and overall zoning policy. So that is my reason for, for not favoring it. Again, coming back to where I started, I, very, a huge amount of respect for anyone who serves on the Planning Board, this appointee as well. But it's important that we get the right people on the Planning Board. It's not a minor board in my judgment. So that's my explanation.
Any other comments or discussions, Counselor Murphy?
I don't know how many of you personally know Mr. Verson. He's been an attorney who's practiced here for over 40 years and has actually developed a lot of properties in North Hampton. So he has a familiarity with the development side of interfacing with both the Building Department, the Planning Department, and also an attorney's insights, and again, I didn't know this objection was coming up tonight, but also an attorney's insight and understanding of exactly what regulation covers what. The energy efficiency of buildings is very well covered in the building code. We've adopted the stretch code here. Those sort of things, the energy efficiency of a building belongs in the building code, not in zoning. And I think he would feel pretty strongly about that. And to the extent that we want to regulate the marketplace, you know, developers try and create environments and properties that are going to want to draw people in, so they purchase them. Developing something that has no appeal in the marketplace results in a failure. We can overregulate things, and I think both as an attorney and a, and a developer, Mr. Verson is very, has a very good understanding of where perhaps we would cross the line in overregulating something. You know, the marketplace has something to say about providing something for everyone and, and things that work get bought and things that don't, don't. You know, he is, you know, I, I'm concerned that he might not share your opinions, but his opinions are valuable. He has a lot of insight. And, and removing him from a board for which he's imminently qualified because we don't agree with some of his opinions isn't the wrong reason to do that. I mean, if he's, if he's abusive to the public, if he's disruptive to the committee, if he doesn't respect the process, you remove him. But just because we don't agree with his opinions when he's intelligent, well-versed, participates and is, you know, and is a team player, doesn't seem necessarily right to me.
Counselor Carney, then Counselor Bidwell.
Okay, thank you. Just a little context, the reason that we took these out of the consent agenda and spoke about it was that we had our meeting really only on Monday. And unfortunately, Counselor O'Donnell wasn't able to be there. And so we're just hearing now that there are concerns about this appointee. I don't know, I mean ordinarily, and it's not as though we rubber stamp, but I think if there are concerns, we would typically try to give, or at least to report on a conversation with the, with the person who's been recommended by the mayor and who has served on the board since 2014. So I don't know if that happened, and I certainly don't see Mr. Verson here or know if he's here or has an opportunity or, you know, we've had any, you know, real chance or even to hear from the mayor. I'm not sure if, oh, the mayor is still here. So I'm interested in hearing more of that before, as Counselor Murphy said, I'd be prepared to remove a person from who's been serving on the, on the Planning Board. And again, I'll defer to ask that question to Counselor O'Donnell about the conversation with Mr. Verson, if he's had that.
Certainly. Well, some appointments require, you know, phone conversations and interviews. And in fact, I remember in 2014, it was the first time I appointed anybody. And so in, in, what was it called, RAO, Rules, Orders, Appointments and something. What we now know is legislative matters, although the function has shifted to City Services. I actually insisted that we bring everyone in person to the committee, and they were somewhat, you know, like, why are we being summoned to this committee? And so our practice has been, you know, phone conversations make more sense. New appointments, I think, require, you know, that kind of interview. Reappointments, I think, require evaluation. And I, you know, didn't call up and say, please defend yourself against my, my concerns. I didn't want to frame it that way. I wanted to interpret someone's actual actions and record. And that's what I'm doing. Also having participated in a joint meeting on a major zoning revision with the, with the appointee in question, upon which I base my recommendation.
Counselor Bidwell.
For, for the record, I, I know Attorney Verson slightly, but not at all well. That's, that's neither here nor there. I would need to know more about the, the context and the overall flavor, rather than taking, taking, taking quotes from minutes like that to, to form an opinion. And it might very well be that, that I might share some reservations as well with, with those opinions. But I don't really, I don't really think that's what's, what's important here. I, I think that zoning and the work of the Planning Board is incredibly complicated. And it lends itself to a variety of opinions. And I think it's healthy to have a variety of opinions represented on, on Planning Board. Indeed, a number of our civic bodies, including this one, are sometimes accused of being too susceptible to groupthink. So I, I, I think it's, it's, it's appropriate that, that there be alternative views represented in this complicated world of zoning and planning. And so I would, with all due respect to Counselor O'Donnell, I would be inclined to be supportive of this appointment.
Counselor Shera, then Counselor Labard.
So I just asked for a clarification. Did I hear that there, I understand that Counselor O'Donnell wasn't there for the meeting, but did I hear that it was a neutral recommendation that came out of the committee?
I'll clarify, yeah. We, we figured we would go ahead and send a neutral recommendation in deference to Counselor O'Donnell's not being there and being able to report on his evaluation.
Okay, so that had a nu—only Mr. Verson had a neutral recommendation?
Right, everything else was a positive recommendation.
Because he had been assigned?
Only because it was neutral, only because we had heard no report.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Labard.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we recognize the mayor. I would like him to speak.
We don't need to make a motion to recommend.
You can't, you don't.
So, Your Honor, do you want to, you want to speak to this, or are you—
I mean, I can, I can certainly, so when I look at boards, one of the things I've tried to do when I look at boards and commissions is I, I look at a number of factors. I look at, I try to look for geographical balance, you know, people who live in different parts of the city. I do try to look at, you know, we try to encourage diversity and on, on commission, committees and boards. But I will say that for boards like this, this one, I also have strived to try to find some diverse opinions. Probably Mr. Verson and I would probably not agree a lot on some land use planning principles and, and some philosophies and things like that. And that's actually, I, I wanted somebody who brought a developer legal background to the Planning Board. And that was a deliberate, you know, when we were looking, when I was looking to fill some positions, we, you know, have some great people on the Planning Board and people who have planning experience and people who work in the field of planning. But I also thought it was important to have some people who were, you know, someone like, you know, Mark Sullivan, who builds things all day long, you know, works for the oldest, you know, business in North Hampton and is a multi-generational construction firm. So also brings some practical experience. And then, you know, someone like Alan Verson, who is an attorney, has worked in, in the field, but has also owns property, has developed properties. So that was by design that I chose him. So, so I guess I would be worried if, if, well, certainly the council, the charter, you know, you have absolute power to reject any of my nominees, certainly. I guess I would just be, I'd be concerned if somebody who served, you know, since 2014 would be rejected because of, you know, two things they said. That would just be a concern. When we do have a reappointment, we talk to staff, we do look at their attendance record, you know, and again, somebody who's an associate versus somebody who is a full member, there's also a difference there. But I felt comfortable putting forward the reappointment of Mr. Verson. And again, do I agree with all of my appointees? No, not necessarily. But what I'm looking for is, in many cases, you know, some diversity of opinion, particularly on a board like the Planning Board. Because as Counselor O'Donnell said, this is a really important function that we do. Land use planning really determines so many other things that happen in the city. So having some diversity of opinion, I think, is good. So, so that was my rationale originally for putting Mr. Verson on the Planning Board. And, and it's why I feel comfortable reappointing him, so.
Thank you.
Counselor O'Donnell, do you want to speak to that, or Counselor Klein, do you—
No, you haven't spoken, so please.
I was told if you're speaking directly—
Do you want to speak in response to—
I don't like going back and forth. I respond to subsequent—
Okay, Counselor Klein.
So I feel like I'm starting to feel here a kind of dialectic around politics and philosophies versus kind of capability, as it were. And it's interesting, especially in these times when we have someone like President Trump appointing someone like Jeff Sessions to be the Attorney General. Is he qualified? Is he, does he have a legal background? Has he been involved in litigating cases? Yes, that, you know, on the surface of things, makes him eligible and perhaps appropriate for many people as Attorney General. But we do make decisions based on politics and philosophies about these things. And I think that's a really important thing to do. And yes, diversity of opinion can be important, but when something like planning and zoning and things that really affect the quality of life in the city are at stake, and somebody is being appointed that has particular kinds of philosophies that don't think about kind of public good, public health, things that are impacted by zoning, I think it's absolutely relevant to take into account this person's politics and philosophies around how development happens. So I appreciate the input from Counselor O'Donnell and the thinking behind how he's presenting this.
Counselor O'Donnell, did you want to respond to the mayor and then Counselor Murphy?
I was, though Counselor Klein sort of encapsulated what I want to say. I, I think perhaps we have to be careful not to go too far and to make it, again, like I said in the beginning of my comments, not to make it personal in any way. Everyone has different opinions. In fact, the mayor listed other members of the Planning Board who are also experienced being developers and attorneys and this kind of thing. So I wouldn't think that diversity of experience would go away. But the other important body besides the Planning Board is the City Council. This is the only chance we really have to influence the makeup of the Planning Board, which has broad powers and implications for the city. It makes up more than the physical fabric of North Hampton. We've encoded in our zoning law, especially during this revision process, other principles that are important as well. So that's the basis on which I'm going at it, not in terms of a personal indictment, but rather the values that Counselor Klein mentioned again, so.
My concern is that Counselor Klein's opinion makes diversity a one-way street. You know, if you, if you, if we agree with you, it's okay. If we don't agree with you, your opinion is somewhat less valid. You know, as the mayor said, we, he tries to get diversity. He tries to get different points of view. I mean, as I recall, the, the meeting you're talking about, I chaired, so I was at that meeting. And we made the most substantial changes in zoning since the 70s, when zoning happened. It was, you know, for somebody that has dealt with the zoning ordinance since the 70s, it was astounding how we came to consensus and made changes that were, you know, were amazing based, I mean, Mr. Fiden's smiling back there, but I remember councils in the 80s and the 90s where he never would have dreamed to attempt to make those kinds of changes, given the demeanor of this body. And it was just astounding to me how successful those were. And I don't recall anybody, you know, having any ideas that were out of line there. You know, and I think it's important that somebody like Mr. Verson, who's knowledgeable, who participates, who clearly, the chair, the staff member of that committee, would have agreed to their reappointment and given him a positive recommendation, just because some of us don't philosophically agree with where they're coming from, that we should stifle them— stifle them and knock them off a committee for that if they're participating and they're not disruptive, just because we don't agree with their points of view.
Counselor Nash.
Yeah, so my thoughts on this is that this discussion really should have happened in committee and that, and that, that the recommendations should have come forward and, you know, it should have happened there. You know, it's, I do employment work. It's important that you do things in the right steps, that there's the initial interviews that, and things get increasingly more important. And we've brought Mr. Verson to this point in this public forum where, you know, we're on TV and everything, and that, and I think that we missed the boat there. And I don't know how to put it back in the box because we were having the discussion here. And I think based on that, that I, you know, I'm, he's made it this far. And that, and I've heard, Mr. Verson, I've heard some of his comments in planning board, and sometimes they are counter to what's going on. And I kind of appreciate that, that, that the, it prompts further discussion and a move away from, I don't want to say groupthink is going on, but that it's good to have somebody who's just going to throw some thoughts in there that'll change the discussion a little. But, but I, you know, I think this should have been hap, this should have happened at committee, so.
Counselor Carney and then Counselor LeBarge.
Just as committee chair, I was, you know, it was unfortunate that we just didn't know that there was a concern. And there typically, I mean, typically we have had, either we know a person or can report. And I would, I mean, my concern tonight is that Mr. Verson would find out that he may not be appointed in the paper or something, which is reported right here. And it just seems, people who are, these are volunteers who serve on our committees, and I think that they ought to have the opportunity, if there is a concern, to come to the subcommittee meeting and speak to the other members of the committee, if, that's typically what we do. We haven't, we haven't ordinarily had, and this is with full appreciation of Counselor O'Donnell's concerns, but this is not the place to do that. We haven't given Mr. Verson the opportunity to address some of those concerns. And as chair of the committee, I just would, we sent forward a neutral recommendation. And my sense is just because where we're at, I'm inclined to favor the appointment.
Counselor O'Donnell, you want to respond to that? And then Counselor LeBarge.
If I may just, yeah, I think those are, I can understand that viewpoint. I want to say respectfully of that viewpoint, I think there's a sense that this is an earthquake, but it's, I see it as more of a tremor. I mean, voting no on an appointment that the mayor puts forward is not, is not a bad thing necessarily. It's just exercising our judgment. And I would say with regards to process, hearing the opinions of my colleagues, which I respect, I would have had to explain my position anyway in full City Council because I would have nonetheless voted no. So I think, at a certain point, I don't think it changes the fundamental issues. It's a responsibility of the council to make decisions on appointments, and that's all this discussion is. It's not anything more. So I've just explained my vote. And people vote differently, then certainly understand that.
Counsel LeBarge.
Yes, I know Attorney Verson very well. And he was on a committee with us, which had to do with landfill. We all had different opinions, and I think that's what made our committee work very, very well. I think it's a great diversity that we have on the planning board. We've had artists on the planning board, too. It's a learning experience for no matter who goes on the planning board. And the mayor is absolutely correct. I mean, he is an attorney. He does know about zoning. He knows about the laws. We've had many attorneys on planning. And I, I'm just so uncomfortable tonight because I just feel this is unfair. It's too bad that we had not known that there could have been a problem with some form of communication and asked Alan to come in to our meeting so that we could talk with him. I'm going to support this appointment 100% because he does have rights to his opinions. And I don't have a right as a counselor if I was on the planning board and somebody said, well, you know, she disagreed with this or about the zoning, about the setbacks or whatever. That's what the planning is all about. You have your opinions, and you got to be very, very knowledgeable. You should have registered land surveyors on it. You should have a lot of educated engineers on the planning board and attorneys.
I'm going to jump in here, the, I think all the points have been made in some respect. I think the, actually, this conversation's illustrative of the value of diversity when conflicting opinions. Because actually, with conflicting opinions actually prompts people who maybe feel fairly confident in their perspective and vote, it will stimulate them to justify it. Now, I don't include Mr. Verson in my fanbase. I understand he's not particularly fond of the way I conduct politeness. But actually, to the mayor's point, I think it's appropriate because I think the snow globe needs to be shaken in order to make the system work in a higher functioning way. And I think predominantly, you know, and I think, again, a good illustration of a successful outcome is what Counsel Murphy refers to, is that that zoning, despite the objections that were heard, that were prompted, actually passed with consensus and was, that was a pretty high hurdle. And it was, the pushback, the way the pushback is done, I would agree. And in fact, actually, some of the other comments that I've heard in some other meetings have rubbed me the wrong way, I'll say. That said, no meeting is exclusive of that. There have been a number of them that have done that. There have been a number of colleagues that have had some discussions that have, I felt, were not philosophically adept, basically, or at least conformed with my sense of philosophy. But I don't think, I mean, I think Counselor O'Donnell's absolutely correct. We're trying to, in regards to that, we're trying to have a committee that reflects the principles and ideals that we want to advance that are laid out in our vision process, all the time that we've dedicated to these particular ideas. That said, you need, another bad metaphor, but a pearl is made because of the irritant. And that the irritant actually provokes a response to that that actually creates something that's greater than the original process. The Jeff Sessions analogy is, I understand the point, but I don't think it's appropriate because the authority that we're talking about here is vastly different. He's not presiding over any agency or anything. But actually, he is a participant in a consensus group that is far different than Jeff Sessions. And I also, I hold your opinion about, and concerns relative to that particular appointment. This appointment is different. This is an advisory board that also, and in fact, particularly in associate position, is not much more than that. It's not, it doesn't, it doesn't command as much authority or impact on the vote, other than challenging people at times when it may or may not be appropriate, but the fact is the challenge part actually is a significant part and a valuable part of the process. So to that degree, yes, and you wanted to respond to that. I was just going to say, to that degree, it's just, it holds for me, I need a higher bar for rejecting a nominee or a deputy, because I, I mean, we've had many that on other departments and other programs and other, that I've strongly disagreed with personally and politically, and I will vote, I have voted in favor of them, simply because I think that mix is appropriate and important. And you?
Sure. I mean, I would just say that diversity of opinion is important. And so I'm perplexed at the portrayal of what would probably be the council's only no vote on any appointment as somehow inappropriate. I sense that I'm in the minority, but I think, as the council president pointed out, with regards to the planning board, it's certainly okay with regards to the City Council. It's okay to have this debate. I firmly believe that we need to scrutinize the people we appoint, and that's what I'm doing.
Absolutely, and that was my point also, that this discussion's illustrative of it. I think that the value of this is, we're discussing, and the reason for the, and the conflict is, has as much value as whatever the outcome of the vote is.
And the other thing, when we critique comparisons and similes, I also don't think the comparison to clams is relevant.
Poysters, please.
This is an irritant. This is how little I know about your metaphor. But, so let me reassert, you know, it's ideology matters, values matter. The issues I pointed out that deserve to be in zoning are important. We just heard an hour-long presentation about how we've transformed some of our values in Northampton into a citywide success with conservation and other things. These are important things to put into zoning. So that's the basis of my explanation for.
No, and I hear you a lot of, you're.
I expect others' opinions as well.
No, and I know you do. And I, and the, my only point that I would make is that the vision and the accomplishments that have been described have come as a result of those debates and discussions that have been more heated and more emphatically and probably more crudely than Mr. Verson's ever expressed, and that there, that we, we need that pushback, basically. I won't say the irritant, at least that, and I agree with you. And I actually, I'm glad that you challenged an appointee. And in my memory, we have challenged some appointees for some.
Way back.
Rather, not particularly strong reasons, they were turning to be personal, personal conflicts with some counselors who were in the, and I had a real problem with that. I know that's not the case here. This is not a personal conflict. This is actually a genuine philosophical conflict. And, and my only point is, despite having people with philosophical differences on these, as appointees, we still have made significant progressive change. And I suspect we will continue to do so. Counsel Murphy's been waiting, and then Counsel Carney.
Having been myself subject to one of the most interesting appointments, I think you were on the council on that.
Yes, yes.
In fact, that resulted in the Committee on Appointments, I think, that exciting television experience. But in this sense, you know, it's interesting because we value diversity here. And given the general tenor of the, of the planning board, Alan is the diversity. You know, he is, he's the thing that doesn't always fit. He is diversity. And the fact, and the fact that we would cleanse him for that very reason seems very unlike something that we would do in this body, you know. He's a different opinion, but he's knowledgeable, he has experience, he participates well. Maybe he doesn't say what we always want to hear, but as the mayor said, that's why he's there. And he's respectful, and he participates, and maybe we don't always like to hear what he has to say, but it's a voice, in this case, that is diversity, that should be heard. And unless he's disruptive and unless he is not acting as a team player, it would seem out of place to urge him for that reason.
I would just say that to Counselor O'Donnell's point, I don't have objections to the objecting to an appointment. I'm a little more concerned about the process because, you know, as was brought up, the reason that we have this in committee is, were a couple of things. One being, I think, giving the prospective appointee or reappointee the opportunity to speak to the committee. And that rarely happens because in our phone conversations or whatever, we may have said, you don't have to come because I'm going to put your name forward as a positive recommendation or whatever. I mean, there's process there, but in this case, there would be, and I don't mean to say it like, but I do see the report, they have to be finding out about it, reading it in the paper. And I just feel like, just as a matter of process, that's not something, if we didn't give him the opportunity to come even tonight with the heads up that there's a concern about your appointment, certainly to our own committee. And so that's the, that's one reason that I, that's the one concern I have about us. Because, you know, finding out the next day is not.
Does anyone have new points to bring to this particular discussion?
No.
I just wanted to, hold on a minute.
And I second that one.
All right.
Roll call?
Okay, roll call, yes.
Counselor Vidwa.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwyer.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
No.
Counselor LeBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
No.
Counselor Shaw.
Yes.
Okay, the appointment is approved with a majority vote. So next up, we've got halfway through the agenda. We're going to recess for finance, and.
Counsel Murphy?
We'll be presiding.
So then I have to say, John, what do you call the role of finance?
I will. Counselor Murphy?
I'm here.
Counselor Carney?
Present.
Counselor LeBarge?
Present.
Counselor Nash?
Here.
Excellent. First item is to approve the minutes of our August 17 meeting. Do we have a motion?
Approved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Great. And we have some financial orders tonight. The first one is upon the recommendation of the mayor at 17.384 to accept a gift of a parklet from the owner of the roundhouse. Whereas, the open space recreation multi-use plan recommends a pavement to parks program preserving small previously urbanized or paved areas as tiny parks or parklets. And whereas, since the adoption of the pavement to parks policy, the city, working with the community members, has completed three pavement to park projects, Amber Lane, Pleasant Street, Hockenheim Road, and a mobile downtown parklet. And whereas, the owner of the roundhouse has offered to develop a new parklet on the rear of the roundhouse city property. And whereas, the city has received a request for development of a 200-square-foot, more or less, public parklet with handicap ramp, which would serve the parklet and a budding business in an unused area off Amber Lane that is not needed by central services or DPW. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council authorizes the mayor to accept the donation of the roundhouse parklet in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A and a half, in a matter to ensure unfettered public access to the parklet, to reserve the right of the city to approve the final design, and to include other such terms and conditions as the mayor finds reasonable. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second?
I was going to have Mr. Fiden talk to you about this. There is a Scrivener's error in the final whereas. I believe it refers to Amber Lane.
Right, I was going to say.
That's Amber Lane. I think that should say.
We're thinking behind the roundhouse. Correct.
That's the verbiage. You can give them the verbiage, so. Yeah, there was a, it was a parklet, cut and paste error or something, whatever, so sorry.
Is this your parklet language?
Yes, I'm sorry, you caught me using the model from Amber Lane over here. So something you know, the historic, it was actually a road behind the roundhouse, which the city still keeps, and we still have infrastructure, a storm sewer that goes underneath there, maybe sanitary sewer that goes underneath there. So roundhouse used to have a sort of a deck behind the roundhouse that was actually on city property. They took it down because it needed some work, came back to us and said they'd like to do some work and bring it back as a little park. It's primarily going to serve people in their building, which is why they're happy to volunteer this, but it is on public property. Our response was that subject to City Council approval. We'd love the idea of people improving another parklet. We know that 90% of the users are going to be people in the building, but anyone else in the public would be welcome to use it. So they'd make the improvements, the improvements they want to make, and so it's very similar to the Amber Lane project.
Just a question. If we were to just say, in an unused area that is not needed by central services and DPW, and just remove reference to Amber Lane, would that be sufficient?
That would be sufficient.
Yes.
But the other thing you should make, as I'm catching my errors, and I apologize for this, is the 200 square feet, that number is also from Amber Lane, it's actually a bigger site. So if you could just strike the square footage, it's a small area, I don't know exactly what its size was. And I, again, apologize for that.
I'll move those two changes.
Okay, so we go.
Second.
All right. So just development of a parklet. So strike the reference to the size and location.
Right.
A floating parklet near the roundhouse.
A floating parklet, near the roundhouse. Excellent. All in favor of the amendments, please say aye.
Aye.
No question.
Yes.
So, is this a, it's a deck or a park?
It's a park. He's gonna do a staircase, so he has a little deck behind his building, that's on his property. He's gonna do a little staircase up to that, but the rest of it is a park. So it's, you know, basically paving stones and greenery that's out there.
So it's gonna look like it's open to the public?
That's right. So one of our conditions for this is, there is a gate right now, which is always closed and says private. That, that gate will be open, and the private sign will come down.
Just, does the deck stay, or...
The deck, it's a very small thing right along his property, that will stay, it's not taking anything down.
Any other questions from anyone for Mr. Fiden? All right, so then, as amended, all in favor of a positive recommendation of finance?
Aye.
Did you get the vote on the...
Were we interrupted on the vote? I thought we voted.
No.
We were about to vote, and then I...
All in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
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 All in favor of the positive recommendation as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
Good. Again, upon the recommendation of the mayor, this is 17.386. This is an order to approve expenditure of up to $5,000 per year in gift funds, whereas the Northampton Parks and Rec Department receives numerous small monetary contributions each year, and whereas, it's in the best interest of the Northampton Parks and Recreation Department in the city to streamline the process by which small monetary gifts up to a certain value may be used to purchase supplies and services for the Parks and Recreation Department and community, therefore order that in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, the council approves the expenditure of up to $5,000 per year in gift funds from the Parks and Recreation general gift account for equipment and services needed by Northampton Parks and Recreation Department to fulfill their mission. Do we have a motion, finance?
Make a motion.
Second.
And the mayor's here to speak on this one.
Yeah, this is basically, Director Mogio frequently will get people wanting to, you know, say, "I'd like to buy a new bag of kickballs," or "I'd like to, you know, donate for, so that you could buy some, you know, new cones for Safety Village," whatever it is, just small, like somebody wants to give them a $90 check or a $100 check. And I think the, the idea then, if they wanna go purchase those, then they'll need to come to the city council to get an appropriation to spend the $100 on the bag of kickballs or the whatever. So, obviously, if the, if the, if Parks and Rec receives a huge gift, they're gonna come forward. So this is, you know, setting a $5,000 limit on the expenditure of gift funds, and just gives them a pre-authorization, and that's in a year. So, you know, they, they can't go over $5,000 with all, you know, combination of gifts here, there, and everywhere, cannot exceed $5,000 in the year, or, you know, they have to come to council, me and the council for approval, so...
So it's like streamlining it?
Exactly, that's the whole idea. And again, you know, they're, they're the kind of department where they tend to get these kinds of gifts. Not every department gets these kinds of gifts, you know? Similarly, you know, well, there's another order coming forward that's for real property. That's more like some of the ones you've approved recently for like the police department, you know, where somebody wants to donate stuffed toys to our animal control officer, so that she can have them for stray dogs, or sometimes teddy bears for kids. The idea that we don't have to come to city council to accept that real property, if it has a certain value, so, similar principle, and there's actually, the next order is gonna do just that as well for, for Parks and Rec, for people who wanna actually give the kickballs, as opposed to money to buy the kickballs, or whatever, whatever it is.
So any other questions for the mayor on this one? Pretty straightforward. All in favor of a positive recommendation of finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And the next one is 17.387, to approve the acceptance of gifts of tangible personal property, very similar, $5,000 or less. Whereas, the Northampton Parks and Rec Department receives numerous gifts of tangible personal property each year, and whereas, Mass. General Law, section, or Chapter 44, Section 53A and a half provides that acceptance of gifts of tangible personal property requires the city council approval of the mayor, and whereas, it's in the best interest of the Parks and Recreation Department in the city to streamline the process by which gifts up to a certain value may be accepted and placed into service for the Parks and Recs Department and community, now therefore be ordered, the city council hereby authorizes the director of the Parks and Rec Department to accept gifts of tangible personal property with a fair market value of $5,000 or less, from the federal government, a charitable foundation, a private corporation, or similar statutory entity, individual, or from the Commonwealth or any political subdivision thereof. The director shall use such gifts for the restricted purpose provided by the donor, or if no restriction is attached, to the gift for such other purposes as the director deems advisable. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Second.
Real similar, any questions on this one?
I think I just explained it, so...
No.
Hearing none, all in favor of a positive recommendation of finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Excellent.
Again, upon the recommendation of the mayor, this is 17.388, in order to approve reprogramming funds totaling $17,361 to central services. Order that $13,562.50 of the remaining balance in the fire alerting system project, that $2,064 of the remaining balance in the building inspection vehicle project, that $1,734.50 of the anticipated remaining balance in the Forbes Library Fire and Smoke Alarm Update Project. You were programmed to provide a total of $17,361 to the Central Services Department for the evaluation, removal, cabling, and stump grinding of trees on the grounds of the Forbes Library. Do we have a motion, finance?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Second, okay.
So, the city's been working very closely with Director Lisa Downing at Forbes Library to do an assessment of their trees, and they actually have two kinds of trees. Well, they have their own trees that are on their property, and then there are city-owned shade trees on the property. And sadly, there's some serious issues with both the shade trees, which you may have seen a recent editorial by the chair of the, of the Public Shade Tree Commission, that the, the tree warden has recommended several of them have to come down, because they're hazardous. And similarly, at the back of the property, on their main property, there's a number of other similar vintage trees that are in a tough situation. Central Services, which oversees maintenance for the library, brought in a private arborist to go through and give us an estimate on a combination of, in some cases, some removals, in other cases, some ca, some trimming and cabling, and has sort of given us a full menu of what needs to happen. This has been, the issue has sort of come to the forefront for, because, you know, Forbes has been hosting a lot of outdoor events, like the outdoor movies and things like that, and there have been concerns about limbs and things falling from hazardous trees, so I, and so there, and just generally circulation around the building, cars and things like that. So, so this would basically reprogram some leftover funds from a series of capital projects, including a Forbes project, to allow central services to move forward. We think this is a critical item, we wanna, we don't wanna wait until the capital improvement program, because there's a, a public safety issue now that we've identified that some of these are hazards.
Other questions for the mayor on this one?
Everybody good with fixing the trees?
Very good, then, all in favor of a positive recommendation of finance, please say aye.
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 Opposed? And the last one is, again, upon the recommendation of the mayor, 17.389, in order to authorize payment of prior year bills, this is from the Department of Public Works from their FY '17 budget, the total amount we're, we're gonna pay is $1,244.44. Three of them to the Southern Computer Warehouse for computer monitors, one for $101.83, one for $123.86, and one for $123.86. Seal Pro for Thoroughbred Mechanical Packing, $377.50. DeValley Motorsports for parts for a generator, $382.92. Foster Farrar for a broom and flag tape, $89.33. And some additional grid for water at the electric department for $45.10. That total is $1,244.40. Do we have a motion in finance?
Make a motion.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion on this one? Water?
Yeah, so it was basically, the water department receives multiple bills for, you know, its facilities, and including some of its pumping stations, et cetera. So this was a bill for a month, or whatever it was, that got sent to the wrong depart, it ended up in the wrong department. And by the time it got rerouted back to DPW to be paid, the fiscal year had already lapsed. So that's, yeah, so that's why it's a, it's a, it's not our electric department, it's our water department's electric bill.
Right.
Not our electric department's water bill.
Yeah, that's, that's...
We don't have an electric department, so, yeah.
Well, that's, that's what struck me.
That's what struck me, so it's a water department electric bill, one of the many that they have, so...
Very good. Hearing no questions, all in favor of a positive recommendation? Please say aye.
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 And that is the end of our agenda, I think. So, I know of no new business, so a motion to adjourn finance would be in order. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so we come out of finance and reconvene, as the full council. So we'll address those financial orders in order. Item 17, well, actually, not in the same order that they were presented there, but item 17.386 is the order to approve the expenditure of up to $5,000 per year in gift funds.
Second.
Mr. First reading, motions made, seconded. Did you get those?
No.
It was Counsel O'Donnell and Counsel Shara. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counsel Carney.
Yes.
Counsel Dwight.
Yes.
Counsel Klein.
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel Nash.
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counsel Shara.
Yes.
Counsel Vidwah.
Yes.
Counsel Carney.
Yes.
Counsel Dwight.
Yes.
Counsel Nash.
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counsel Shara.
Yes.
Counsel Vidwah.
Yes.
Counsel Carney.
Yes.
Counsel Dwight.
Yes.
Counsel Nash.
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counsel Shara.
Yes.
Counsel Vidwah.
Yes.
Counsel Carney.
Yes.
Counsel Dwight.
Yes.
Counsel Nash.
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counsel Shara.
Yes.
Counsel Vidwah.
Yes.
Counsel Carney.
Yes.
Counsel Dwight.
Yes.
Counsel Nash.
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counsel Shara.
Yes.
Counsel Vidwah.
Yes.
Counsel Carney.
Yes.
Counsel Dwight.
Yes.
Counsel Nash.
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counsel Shara.
Yes.
Counsel Vidwah.
Yes.
Counsel Carney.
Yes.
Counsel Dwight.
Yes.
That passes in first reading.
Item 17.389, this is an order to authorize payment of a prior year bill.
Approve.
Second.
Motion's made, seconded. Discussion?
Counsel LeBarge.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel Nash.
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counsel Shara.
Yes.
Counsel Vidwah.
Yes.
Counsel Carney.
Yes.
Counsel Dwight.
Yes.
Counsel Klein.
Yes.
That passes in first reading as well. Item 17.373, this is an order authorizing the payment of a prior year bill.
Move to approve.
Motion's made, and seconded. Discussion?
I support paying your bills. Let's do it.
Noted, okay. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel Nash.
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counsel Shara.
Yes.
Counsel Vidwah.
Yes.
Counsel Carney.
Yes.
Counsel Dwight.
Yes.
Counsel Klein.
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge.
Yes.
Okay, now we come to a second reading, it's gonna sound eerily familiar. Item 17.373, this is an order authorizing the payment of a prior year bill.
We just did that, didn't we?
This is, this is the second reading for one that we approved last, last meeting. This one's the, yeah, hence the confusion. So is there a motion?
Check with, to, check with...
We just did vote on that. 373.
We did, did...
We did on. We did a previous year bill first, a first reading, of the, with the computer monitors and all those.
With 389, though?
Don't support paying bills twice.
So we have, item 17.389 was an order to authorize payment of a prior year bill.
Right, we did that one, and we did...
You already said that, right. Then you just did 373.
We did 373.
Okay, well, God forbid, I don't wanna do that, but it's okay. All right, now we're up to item 17.374.
Yes.
This is an order to accept a donation of $4,000 for the purchase and installation of benches, this is second reading.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion on the benches? Roll call, please.
Counsel Nash.
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counsel Shara.
Yes.
Counsel Vidwah.
Yes.
Counsel Carney.
Yes.
Counsel Dwight.
Yes.
Counsel Klein.
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge.
Oh, that is counselor, a skunk, I meant to say.
What a slip. Wow.
Some, some Freudian issues. Okay. We're, okay.
He's going to come in.
We're up to orders, item seventeen point three eight four, this is an order to accept a gift of a parklet from the owner of the roundhouse.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Council O'Donnell?
Yes.
Council Shara?
Yes.
Council Bidwell?
Yes.
Council Carney?
Yes.
Council Dwight?
Yes.
Council Klein?
Yes.
Council LeBarge?
Yes.
Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
That passes in first reading. Item seventeen point three five four, this is an order to endorse the Walk-Bike Northampton Citywide Pedestrian and Bicycle Comprehensive Plan. Second reading, motions made and seconded. Council Murphy?
I do have, I, because I abstained on this last time because I hadn't read it yet, and I have read it, so I wonder if I could ask Mr. Fiden a couple of questions about it? Because I don't want to not, I don't want to, I want to be able to vote for it, but I have got questions. One of the objectives is to reduce single occupancy vehicles. What sort of things would you do to do that?
So the bike share program we talked about, it suddenly makes life a lot easier. So I, I live about, just over a mile from downtown, and you can imagine it becomes much easier for me to bicycle if I can do a bike share instead of driving. So it's, well, I mean, I think the key thing is all through incentives, not through disincentives. So how do we make it more desirable for people to walk and bicycle and carpool? In the past, we've brought Zip Card to Northampton, working with Smith College, we're now bringing bike share, the bike lanes, the work on Elm Street that makes it more desirable for walk. There's a number used in planning that most people walk a quarter of a mile before they drive, and many people walk four tenths of a mile, but it's actually not very accurate, has to do with how much resistance there is. So the more desirable the walk, the further people will walk, the less desirable, the less they'll walk.
Then on the Main Street redesign, there's all sorts of things with bike lanes and crosswalks and islands and bump outs and wider sidewalks and all of that, and then minimizing any reduction in curbside parking. Do those two things, can those two things really happen together?
Yes.
Because I know the downtown business community loves their curbside parking.
Oh, and they're absolutely right.
To make it safer and, and more accessible, but not minimize people's access, because as we all know, they don't like to walk very far.
Yes, I think it's absolutely critical. So there probably are going to be a couple of parking spots lost right around streets where you need better line of sight, but yes, the idea is thinking, so what we worked carefully with Alta is thinking real estate downtown is really valuable. We can't do wider sidewalks and tree belts and bike lanes because we don't want to lose parking, so that, that becomes part of it, is, yeah, parking's really a critical part.
And on Elm Street, you talk about changing the orientation of the parking so it buffers the bike lanes, so you'd parallel park and then have a gap for a bike lane in front of it, between the cars and the curb.
Right, if you look at the, the new bike lanes that we put in on Pleasant Street, they're only 400 feet long, but that's what we did. The bike lanes are sidewalk, then bike lane, then park cars.
Mm-hmm.
And that's sort of growing in popularity. Elm Street, we've made some, or Smith College has made some investment in curb extensions. So we know if we were doing it over today, we would do Elm Street differently. Whether the benefits are worth ripping out some investment, that, that remains to be discussed.
Would that, to make them seasonally usable, require, because when we remove the snow from the street, then it winds up in the bike lane, would we be trying to clear them to permit your on-bike use, or?
That becomes a philosophical question, how do you want to use resources, but frankly, we already have a problem right now. On Elm Street, when it gets plowed, they're not picking up the snow, so we lose about two feet of Elm Street, so the cars park two feet out, so we lose the bike path already. So whatever that discussion is, is the same today as it is, right.
And then, when we talk about removing gaps on Elm Street and, and the bike trail, so the, the bike lane gaps, what concerns me is, particularly when you get up by the high school, because the high school sucks up a lot of parking, and to remove what spaces are there puts more impact on residential streets, because even though that's a captive audience, the, we can't control the kids that drive their cars, so they park all over the place.
Right, right. So, so that's part of the discussion I was looking at. So all the things we have right now are often hybrids, so if you think, for example, at Florence, the sharrows work through Florence, it sort of warns you where the bicycles are, and we not, we're not giving up any of the parking spots in Florence, but at least it's a continuous system. We get to Florence and it's continuous. The same thing on Elm Street, when you leave State Street, because we didn't want to lose parking on, on Elm Street, the first bit, when you climb up the hill up to College Hall, the bike lane is too narrow to be called a bike lane, so it's technically called a shower. At least there's, there's some marker from when you leave State Street all the way to when you get to the high school. It's discontinuous until you get to Florence again. So, so the thinking is it should be continuous, that doesn't mean it's a dedicated lane, it might be a lane where you can, there's certainly places along Child's Park where we could put a lane, and other places, just to clear shower lines to warn people.
Because up in that area, parking is allowed, but it doesn't happen very often, so you wouldn't really notice.
Yeah, so think about the continuity as being a clear message for where we expect bicycles to go, but not necessarily a clear, consistent bike lane every place there.
And then the last one, actually, is relevant to our previous discussion about the, about, about the planning board and the sort of discussions they have. That is one of the objectives in Goal Two, to ensure that we privately build streets, include sidewalks consistent with the Northampton subdivision regulations, when feasible and practical, concrete sidewalks on two sides of a street are more desirable. But then we get into the cost of that and the fact that when we do stuff like that, it raises the price of housing. So on one hand, we, you know, one hand philosophically, it's a nice thing to have, on the other hand, it raises the cost of, of housing, and we don't like that either. So, I mean, that's a discussion more for the planning board, because they're the ones that deal with that.
So let me use as an example, we passed, you all passed, maybe 10 years ago, I'm not exactly sure the time, a dis, a language about roundabouts. And what the language says for roundabouts, which we've been following religiously for the last decade, is we always start with the assumption that a roundabout is the best solution, because it's safer, there's less crashes, when there's crashes, it's less likely to be fatal, but often, that's not true. So it's sort of, we start with that and then we look at exceptions. So since we passed that, we put in two roundabouts, you know, Look Park and Con Street, and we have two under design, but at the same time, we added a signal by the state hospital, we added a signal at South Street and Route 10, probably other signals, I'm not remembering offhand. So we sort of start with a default and saying, oh, by, stop by Big Y. So we added three signals, none of which were roundabouts, and we added two roundabouts in the same time period. But, but for the ones that were signals, every single one of those, we had a discussion. Could we do a roundabout in front of Big Y? No, didn't meet MassDOT standards. Could we do one by Earl Street? No, because the river drops down and would use up land. So it, so think of that language as, let's start the conversation saying, yes, we'd like concrete on both sides of the street, and then there's lots of reasons for exceptions.
And I do want to compliment you, you have a putting in there, the intersection of Milton and Riverside and Elm, because that is a deadly intersection, and it's, you know, you've got high school kids going through there, and you, you know, kids walking, and also young drivers trying to negotiate a very awkward intersection, so I'm glad that one's a priority.
We actually have a tiny parcel of tax title property there, and so we're looking at, should we take that, just because it's in back taxes, should we take it to add to the road right away to give us more options?
To tee, yeah, because that is very, very unsafe, and I've seen many times, young drivers have a really hard time getting out of their safelanes. All right, it's all my questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Council Shara?
Yes.
Council Bidwell?
Yes.
Council Carney?
Yes.
Council Dwight?
Yes.
Council Klein?
Yes.
Council LeBarge?
Yes.
Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council O'Donnell?
Yes.
All right, that passes in second reading. This is item seventeen point three six eight. This is an order accepting Lot Four at Earl Street in Village Hill for municipal and other purposes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Uh, Council Bidwell?
Yeah.
Uh, Council Carney?
Yes.
Council Dwight?
Yes.
Council Klein?
Yes.
Council LeBarge?
Yes.
Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council O'Donnell?
Yes.
Council Shara?
Yes.
Okay, that passes in second reading. Item seventeen point three six nine, this is an order authorizing the purchase of 55 acres on East Hampton Road and Route 10, and Old Wilson Road for conservation, municipal and other purposes. Second reading.
Second.
So you seconded it, but did someone make a motion? Okay, all right, thank you, all right. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Council Carney?
Yes.
Council Dwight?
Yes.
Council Klein?
Yes.
Council LeBarge?
Yes.
Uh, Council Murphy?
I'm still going to vote no on this one, because I wish, we exempted some of it for development, but I wish we exempted a little more, so I'm going to still vote no.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council O'Donnell?
Yes.
Council Shara?
Yes.
Council Bidwell?
Yes.
And then, item seventeen point three eight two, this is a warrant for November 7th, 2017 election. There, and I'm going to read this. This is upon the recommendation of interim city clerk Pamela L. Powers, and this is a warrant regarding the municipal election scheduled for November 7th, 2017. A meeting of, of the inhabitants of the city of Northampton qualified to vote will be held on Tuesday, November 7th, 2017. And the several polling places designated for the purposes by the city councils follows. Ward One, Precinct A in Jackson Street School Auditorium, Ward One, Precinct B, also in Jackson Street School Auditorium, Ward Two, Precinct A in Smith Vocational Agricultural High School Gymnasium, Ward Two, Precinct B, also in Smith Vocational Agricultural High School Gymnasium, Ward Three, Precinct A in the Senior Center Great Room at 67 Con Street, Ward Three, Precinct B, in the Senior Center of the Great Room and 67 Con Street, Ward Four, Precinct A, that's in the Senior Center as well, Great Room, 67 Con Street, Ward Four, Precinct B, in the Senior Center, the Great Room, Ward Five, Precinct A in the Florence Civic and Business Building at 90 Park Street, and Ward Five, Precinct B, that will be at Smith Vocational Agricultural High School Gymnasium, Ward Six, Precinct A in the Robert K. Finn Ryan Road School, and that is true, Precinct B as well, and Ward Six, Precinct, Ward Seven, Precinct A in the John F. Kennedy Middle School Community Room, and then Ward Seven, Precinct B, in Leeds School Gymnasium at the lower level. The polls will be open at 7:00 on the forenoon and close at 8:00 on the evening of the said day, and all such voters will, within the said hours, in the wards in which they are individually entitled to vote, give in their votes for mayor for four ensuing municipal years, for city clerk for the two ensuing municipal years, for two counselors-at-large for the two ensuing municipal years, for one counselor from each of the seven wards of the city for the two ensuing municipal years, for two members of the school committee at large for two years from the first Monday of January 2018, for one school committee member from each of the seven wards of the city for two years from the first Monday of January 2018, and then also for three superintendents of the Smith Agricultural School to serve for two years from the first Monday of January 2018, and also for one elector under the Oliver Smith Will for two years from the first Wednesday of May 2018, and for two trustees under the Will of Charles E. Forbes for four years from the first Monday of 2018. I'll accept a motion.
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion on this? And the interim city clerk is here, if you have any questions. Council Nash?
I just want to say, I love the, the language, that it's, it's a public meeting, an election. We're, we're all coming together for a meeting, that's all.
Get out there.
There you go. Uh, any other discussion on those, on this warrant? Okay, roll call, please.
Council Dwight?
Yes.
Council Klein?
Yes.
Council LeBarge?
Yes.
Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council O'Donnell?
Yes.
Council Shara?
Yes.
Council Bidwell?
Yes.
Council Carney?
Yes.
Council.
Yes.
Okay, that passes in first reading and will be up before us at our next meeting in September. Now we come to ordinances, and this is item seventeen point three nine oh, this is an ordinance to amend the zoning map 350 dash 3.4, to expand the Highway Business District on North King Street. This is to refer to Committee on Community Resources and the Committee on Legislative Matters.
Move to refer both these, item B is.
So you also, item B, which is seventeen point three eight three, it's an ordinance to refine project categories for which a local historic district review is required, and also, that's to be referred to the Committee on Legislative Matters. Do you think it should go to the Community Resources Committee as well?
Um, I don't, but I would defer to the chair of the Committee on Community Resources.
Would you be happy to have it?
Happy to have it? I'm, I'm just asking, just for, since we're making.
Why not?
All right, so then, then so be it. It will also, for referral to Community Resources. Any discussion on the referral? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now we come up to the disclosure by a non-elected municipal employee of financial interest and determination by appointing authority, as required by the general law, Chapter 268A, Section 19. And this is, and the interim city clerk is here for questions, but this is a, Pam Powers, who was appointed, as you recall, to the interim city clerk position, well, let me give some background on this. We've had no less than, at least three, maybe four, opinions from the State Ethics Board, sometimes in direct conflict with each other, and, and verbal opinion. So Pam is awaiting a written opinion, which is not going to come in time for this disclaimer to work. They may change their mind, we don't know, but this is a suspenders and belt kind of response, just erring on the side of caution. Pam is declaring her conflict so that she can affect certain, start the election process, some, which according to some, one of the opinions, she would be excluded from, and now our most recent opinion, by declaring this conflict and being accepted by us, the appointing authority, because we appointed, for the purposes of the state, and I'll be corrected if I'm wrong, but for the purposes of the state, they consider Pam not an elected official in her interim capacity, but as an appointed official by this department, being the city council. We, in that respect, different rules apply. My head has been, this has been driving me crazy, it's been driving us all crazy, and it's, and Pam has been ver, has been assiduously cautious about how to proceed with this, so not to create an appearance or a semblance or even any unintentional conflict. The most recent opinion that she has had suggests that she make this declaration, and then we, as the appointing authority, have to approve her ability to continue to work in the capacity that we've appointed her to do. So that's what this discussion is. And the mayor is here, the mayor's been part of this discussion, Pam is here, she's, she's been neck-deep in this as well, and if you have any other questions, or, because I, you know, you should welcome the opportunity to become even further confused as this thing goes, but anyone have any questions relative to this? Actually, first I would ask someone to put it on the floor.
Make a motion.
Okay, all right, motions made and seconded, okay. Council Carney, you first, and Council Bidwell?
I'm just trying to understand the necessity of this. I mean, the previous city clerk oversaw many municipal elections in which she was a candidate and had a financial interest in terms of being able to keep.
That's true.
Keep her job, should she, and so I'm, my question is more one of, is it because this, I mean, they were all, is it because it's a contested election? I mean.
No, it's actually, ironically, one of the opinions that was rendered indicated that the city clerk presiding over any election that has their name on the ballot is in conflict, is an automatic conflict.
So that would assume that the 12 or however many elections the previous city clerk oversaw were.
That's one part, interpretation, yes.
Okay, so, and this is, this falls on, this is coming from that interpretation, this, so it's, but, but there's no harm in doing the disclosure or following this recommended, it's just that we didn't do that the dozen or so times that.
Well, in, in fact, actually, this is an exemption that's unique.
So that would assume that the 12 or however many elections the previous city clerk oversaw were...
One possible interpretation, yes.
Okay. So, and this is, this falls on, this is coming from that interpretation, so it's, but there's no harm in doing the disclosure or following this recommended. It's just that we didn't do that the dozen or so times that...
Well, in fact, actually, this is an exemption that's unique. This is not an exemption. In fact, towns, there is a built-in, there's mass general law that allows exemptions for towns, not for cities, however. And the irony here is the one retired city clerk, Maza, actually recused herself from one election. That was the one she was contested. Ironically, that's the one she didn't have to, because she was not city clerk at the time. It doesn't have to be a contested election. It has simply your name on the ballot. At least, that's one opinion at this point. It's subject to change. The solicitor has some questions about that. My comment is, we've only had 300 years to parse this out, and we haven't quite figured it out yet. But the, this is one of the strange anomalies that just gets stranger as we go. Counselor, oh, Counselor Bidwell is next.
I'm fine providing a belt to go along with the suspenders or whatever. But we put a motion on the floor. What is the motion? Are we acknowledging...
We're acknowledging and approving, and actually, and actually, the determination by the appointing authority and appointing official would be us in collectively, and I, the, what we are saying is that we have reviewed, or I have reviewed, is what it says, the particular matter and the financial interest identified above by the municipal employee. I have determined that the financial interest is not so substantial as to be deemed likely to affect the integrity of the services which the municipality may expect from the employee.
Is that statement?
That's towards the bottom.
Towards...
Bottom of the disclosure.
Other first, second page. Yeah.
So, in fact, that...
Oh, the under-determination.
That language is, in fact, the motion.
That's the motion.
That's the motion, yes.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, yeah.
That's the clarification.
Yeah. Counselor O'Donnell and Counselor Murphy?
On what opinion are we basing this on?
This was Pam's most recent opinion from the State Ethics Board.
A verbal opinion.
Verbal opinion. She has requested a written, and they've said that they, Pam, 30 days? You've got another, at least 30 days before they...
Interestingly enough, I did get a response.
Oh, do you want to, you want to step up here and...
Essentially, the written opinion was exactly what I was told through verbal means.
What the State Ethics has said is that my position as the interim city clerk is one of an appointed position. And as an appointed employee, I can file this disclosure to state my financial interest. And as long as the city council is in agreement with it, then I can move forward and handle all of the election procedures. If you deny it, then we would have to figure out a different way to resolve the issue about who's going to oversee the election. This only applies because I have been appointed. Once the election takes place, and whoever it is that is the city clerk, the conflict then comes into play again, and then you would need to figure out how to address that conflict.
I have a question to that, to that point. The conflict comes into effect every two years, whenever the city clerk runs for election?
Is on the ballot, yes.
Is on the what?
Is on the ballot.
Is on the ballot. So does that, so in general, without, so cities or towns that don't approve or recognize, make this determination, would have to find someone else to oversee their elections typically, than their city clerk?
The conflict, the law indicates that this only applies to cities. And some cities have appointed city clerks. So those would not be in conflict.
It's the ones that all the cities...
One at a time, one at a time.
It's the ones that are elected city clerks who would be in conflict.
So in every city that there's an elected city clerk, that city clerk has to do a similar financial disclosure in order to, for the city, run the city's election?
Well, that's based on the opinion that I received from State Ethics.
But that's an appointed city clerk by the city council. It's not an elected city clerk. It's a completely different, well, two different chapters of the law here.
That's why I just asked. She said it's elected, though.
No, I believe there are two different, because Pam now functions as a city employee under our egis.
Right.
It would be different as an elected appointee. They would still have to declare the conflict, but under a different...
Okay. So it's not the same determination, same...
It's not the same determination, and it's not anywhere near the same.
I don't have that ability to do that, to issue...
We wouldn't, it wouldn't come before us. You wouldn't make the declaration before us because you're an elected official at that point. And it's not, and we have no authority over, we wouldn't be, it wouldn't be under our authority. The only reason that we're discussing this and this becomes up an issue is because we're the appointing authority. Beyond that, it's an elected position. And then, at that point, we better hear from the State Ethics Board pronto, because then it comes up to...
Every two years?
...the electorate. The electorate has to approve the conflict or something, which is bizarre.
From the opinion, however, if you are elected as the city clerk in November 2017, please note that you will not be eligible to use the 19B1 exemption in the future, because you will no longer be an appointed municipal employee. But rather, you would be an elected municipal employee, and as such, you will be ineligible for the 19B1 exemption.
That's right. Okay. So there would be no qualification. There is no exemption process.
Oh, so there's no conflict. There's no conflict for an elected city clerk?
No, there is a conflict. There's no exemption.
So no elected city clerk may run a city election?
Unless you're a town clerk.
Unless you're a town clerk, but a city clerk...
No city clerks run elections?
No.
I don't know the answer to that.
Here's the problem. This is where it comes in conflict with our charter. It comes in conflict with existing state law, because the law actually, Massachusetts general law requires the city clerk to preside over financial, the finance statements of a campaign. The state says that. But at the same time, now they're saying, if you're an elected city clerk, you can't. You can't touch it. You're in conflict. And then you are, literally, a significant portion of your job is rendered moot. And this is why the State Ethics Board has to clear this up, or alternately, and this is another agenda item for some other discussion for other time, remove this as an elected position. Counselor O'Donnell?
When does this have to be voted on by the council? Because I...
There's not in a hurry with this.
We understand what the letter about this exemption is, but I didn't understand I was going to be voting on this tonight. And so what is the guidance for the city council?
Well, the urgency, part of the urgency, of course, is Pam can't do anything relative to the election until we say so. However, there's been training, I understand. Amy could handle some of it, some of it, no?
Well, I haven't trained her.
Oh, okay.
So I'm not sure what experience that she has running the election under Wendy's guidance. We are calling in the state on September 11th. They'll be coming in to train all of the employees on the state's computer system. And that, you know, that's something that everyone is going to be participating in and will benefit from.
But ordering the machines, the ballots, all that stuff, you will not be able to do until we recognize and acknowledge your conflict and prove.
Correct.
Your follow-up. When does this have to be done?
Well...
Soon as possible, as we have a moment here.
Yeah. We're in September.
Well, it's 61 days until the election. By the time the city council meets again, four days later will be when the, you know, the selections get drawn for the positions on the ballot. It's...
Hang on a sec. Counselor Murphy's next, and then we'll counsel LeBarge, then Counselor Bidwell.
I also wanted to say that, you know, there's also the, you know, the getting ready of the employees, the, you know, the, the state just issued new election laws. The election workers need to be trained in those laws. So there's a lot of work to be done between now and November 7.
Counselor Murphy?
So I don't see the conundrums or leap of faith here. I mean, we just appointed Pam to be the interim city clerk, knowing full well that there was an election around the corner, right? So what's the surprise here? We appointed her to be city clerk with the understanding there was an election coming and that she was a candidate in that election, right? So all we're going to do is acknowledge the fact that, yes, we know you're a candidate. And knowing that, we appointed you to this position because we have faith in the fact you could execute the job impartially, even though you're on the ballot. So I don't see the leap of faith here. And then the Commonwealth, the rocket scientists in Boston have two years to figure out how to solve what is essentially their problem with their conflicting laws. I mean, it's kind of their problem. One statute says this, one statute says that. And it's not just our problem. It's the problem of every city in Massachusetts that elects a city clerk. You know, I think it's not a leap of faith for me, because we just did this knowing this was going to happen. We're just acknowledging, when we appointed you, we knew this was going to happen, and we stand by that appointment. We trust your ability to do it. And then we let, as I said, those wise folks at the end of the skirt by figure out the other problem, because it's their problem, not our problem.
Yeah. That's usually how that works.
Maybe, maybe they can do it in two years. Luckily, it's not the best.
As I said, they've only had 300 years. Counselor LeBarge?
I don't know where to go with this. I'm just so confused with this.
Do you have any questions that I can help you with?
I heard you say something about, say for an example, with our previous city clerk. Okay, she was an elected position, okay? And she didn't have any candidates, but like you said, a one-shot deal she did, that was legal. So I'm confused with that remark versus her being in office.
Well, the requirement is, if your name is on the ballot, according to the State Ethics Board, you cannot participate in any process that involves the election beyond your campaign. And...
Without the, without the...
No, there's no exemption.
Oh, no exemption for an elected.
Right. Wendy recused herself when she was assistant city clerk to run...
I remember.
So there wouldn't be a conflict. But that was not required then, because she wasn't the city clerk. So she wasn't standing in conflict. She was merely a candidate. And Chris Skorupski was the city clerk at the time and would be presiding over that election. So the, in the state's opinion, that, a system that they actually set up, that there is a built-in conflict that can't be rectified in elected city clerks. So there's the problem. So regardless of who, as Pam points out, regardless who wins this election, they will always be standing, as long as they're elected, according to the state, will always be in conflict and cannot participate in the election process beyond their campaigning.
So right now, she would not be able to?
No, in this case, yes. She would be able to, because she's appointed by us. We presumed under our charter that that qualifies as an election. She was elected to the position, and we're, and she was being treated as an elected official. So, and then we found out this issue about the state's conflict, and then this whole issue about the exemptions. I know I'm not clearing this up, but it's, the fact remains is that because she's appointed, she actually qualifies for an exemption, because she's appointed by us. She is not an elected official in the eyes of the state.
So then she can go ahead and go into the schools, check the ballots and all that?
Well, that's, that's something to be discussed about how Pam would, how Pam would conduct herself.
We did have a discussion about that, about some of the, you know, activities that are performed by the city clerk before, during, and after the election. And one of the things that Nora, her name is Nora Malam, made clear is that I can't go to the polling places on election day. That is absolutely something that cannot be done as a candidate on the ballot.
And what about the counting of the absentee ballots?
That was not an issue. They're sealed. There is, you know, I think practices that we need to put in place for the chain of custody of the ballots. But in terms of executing the, you know, getting people and handling their absentee ballots to help them fill them out is not a concern. But from my perspective, the chain of custody is something that we need to sort of address.
Right. You mentioned that to me. Counselor Bidwell?
I would just like to make the point that there's nothing we can do about previous elections.
Right.
We don't know what's going to happen by way of additional opinions between now and the next election. All we are here to do is to vote on this particular declaration, which clearly, in the language of that opinion, is what we need to do. And I would suggest we just focus on that, take the vote, and let the rest of it be for other discussion.
Any other comments on this? Or any other questions? Okay. So I'm going to ask for a roll call on this one.
Do you want to read the motion again, just so that we know?
Well, the motion, actually, Pam has revealed to us this disclosure, but ultimately, what we are approving is this language here. As appointing official, and in fact, this is boilerplate, obviously, as I read it, and I still haven't figured out how we're supposed to assign this, but as appointing official as required by general law, Chapter 268A, Section 19, "I have reviewed the particular matter and the financial interest identified above by a municipal employee. I have determined that the financial interest is not so substantial as to be deemed likely to affect the integrity of the services which the municipality may expect from the employee."
That's the motion.
Okay? So that's essentially the motion. Counselor Shara?
So, but how are we going to sign this? Because it has to be signed before we...
You're authorizing the president to sign.
Yeah. So the motion, yes, if you want to craft the motion, do you authorize...
I'll just say it as, as it was spoken with the preceding language, authorizing the president to...
Signature, okay.
So where it says, "I have..."
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
There's a tiny space for comment, which I actually plan on using, but it's... Counselor Nash?